Welcome, everyone. I now call the June 25, 2024 Special City Council Meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, we will take a moment to take a roll call of the council members by position number. Please stay here when the city clerk calls your name. City clerk?
Thank you. Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember Kerd?
Here.
Councilmember Menke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Before we continue with the rest of the agenda, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And we are all here. First up on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the meeting agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We have the Bothell Small Business Workshop Series, Wednesdays, July 10 through 31 at 6:00 PM at Bothell City Hall. In collaboration with One East Side, this workshop series offers a comprehensive guide for new or aspiring business owners at a significantly subsidized cost. We have the Fourth of July Parade Pancake Breakfast and Car Show on July 4, 8:30 AM to 3:00 PM in downtown Bothell. You can join us for our longstanding hometown celebration and Bothell's biggest community event of the year and enjoy, as my daughter said the other day, firefighters are amazing cooks. And I can't wait to eat breakfast again. So they're amazing cooks. You should come join us. We also have the Bothell Bloodworks Northwest Blood Drive, July 17 through 18, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM in Bothell Council Chambers. You can donate right here at City Hall and give the gift of life. So you can sign up for an appointment at donate.bloodworksnw.org. Next up, we have public comment. The city has accepted public comment in writing, as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the city clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you will have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but upon the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics, and staff will make note of items requiring follow-up. City clerk, I'm guessing from my email inbox that we probably have somebody signed up to talk tonight?
We have a number of people. Thank you, Mayor Thompson. Before we begin, public comments shall be limited to the topics concerning current, future, or requested city projects, actions, programs, plans, and regulations. Comments not pertaining to these subject matters are not germane and may result in the speaker's comments being suspended. When your three minutes start, the light at the dais will turn green. At one minute left, it will start blinking, and at 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow. Before we start with the people that are in the audience that wish to speak, I will say that we received 21 comments regarding the Bothell United Methodist Church Letter of Interest, written comments, and they will all be made part of the record and be included with the minutes when they come out for your approval. We also received a written comment from a woman named Diana, no last name, regarding rent at 55-plus manufactured home parks, and a written comment from Mark Swanson regarding Bothell Growth and Federal Way comparisons. With that, we're going to move on to the those that requested to speak. The first one I have signed up is Cara Anderson Ahrens. If you step to the podium, and you'll have three minutes once you get there.
Hi. Oh, I did it right. Great. My name is Cara Anderson Ahrens, and I am speaking on behalf of the North Shore Schools Foundation in favor of the Bothell Urban Project. And I have some talking points here, but I'm not going to read the whole thing. I'm just going to say that the Schools Foundation is behind this 100%. And a lot of it is because we are some of the people that stand in between our families and their students and being able to have their children ready and able to learn. And so many of our families, we think that we don't have need for low-income housing in an area like North Shore, and that just isn't true anymore and probably hasn't been true for quite a while. I think anymore we don't find people that argue as much as maybe they did 10 years ago. But it's a significant problem, and it's a significant problem for diversity. The Edmonds, or Edmonds, geez, sorry. My son goes to the Edmonds School District, so that's on my brain, too. But the North Shore School District is now a majority-minority school district. And so that means that we have to be extra careful about making sure that there is equity in housing, that there is equity in access to great education. And when students don't have what they need at home or a great home, they can't be ready to learn, and then they are behind on becoming amazing community members here when they grow and graduate. So I think that's my spiel, but I just want to say that having a space where there is a community agency who's ready to serve people of all needs, and then a space where we can gather and where we can be together, sounds like a win-win for Bothell.
Thank you. Next, we have Manuel Lorraine. Manuel, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. You have three minutes.
All right. Good evening, city council members. My name is Manuel Lorraine, and I am the Marketing Manager at Northwest Electric and Solar. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today. I'm here to express my support for the Bothell Urban Project. As a local electrical and solar contractor, we deeply invest in our community's growth and sustainability, and this initiative is crucial to our collective future. The solar industry is labor-intensive and requires a robust local workforce. To effectively decarbonize Washington's electrical grid, we need skilled workers who can live close to their jobs. Unfortunately, many potential entry-level employees are priced out of the local housing market, forcing them to endure long commutes or seek employment elsewhere. We can retain and attract the talent necessary to drive the green energy transition by providing affordable housing. The solar sector has the potential to generate many jobs, and since I started working here four years ago, we've doubled the office staff and now plan to add 20 to 30 jobs as an installer in the next two years. These jobs are essential not just for our industry, but also for the economic vitality of Bothell. By providing affordable housing, we are not just addressing a social need, but also laying the foundation for a thriving local economy. Additionally, paying low-income housing with an indoor community center and expanded social services will strengthen the fabric of our community. Such a center would provide a hub for education, training, and social interaction, fostering a sense of belonging and cooperation among residents. The holistic approach ensures everyone can access the resources they need to thrive regardless of income. In conclusion, building a community center alongside low-income housing is not just a compassionate choice, it's a strategic one. It aligns perfectly with Washington's sustainability goals, economic growth, and social cohesion. By investing in this initiative, we are not just building houses, but also stronger, more resilient Bothell capable of meeting future challenges. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Alan Jacobson.
Thank you. As you heard, my name is Alan Jacobson, and I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to study session item B regarding the letter of intent provided by Bothell United Methodist Church to the city concerning affordable housing. I am a member of the Bothell UMC team that, as many of you know, has been in conversation with the city for several years on this project. And we believe that the current letter of intent addresses the questions and the concerns previously raised by city council and staff. I and my family have lived in the Seattle area since 1986. We've lived in Kent, Renton, and now Bothell for the past 12 years, and I can say that Bothell is a great place to live. But not everyone can afford to live in Bothell. If this project and the LOI was just about affordable housing, it would be a great investment of city resources. But the project is more than that. It's about creating a safe and inclusive community gathering space for everyone, a cafe with community benefits above and beyond the menu, and a space to provide for in-person access to human service providers so folks don't have to travel to other cities for such access. The project identified in the LOI brings two significant partners to the table, Bothell United Methodist Church and Bridge Housing. Bothell UMC has been a member of the Bothell community since the late 1800s, when Mary Bothell, who helped found the church, saw the need to provide a safe space to support returning Civil War veterans suffering from the mental and physical anguish of war and being POWs. Bothell UMC has continued through the years to identify and help respond to the needs of the community. Bridge Housing is nationally recognized for developing and managing affordable housing projects. Together, these organizations bring local and national resources to bear on affordable housing in Bothell, as well as addressing other identified needs of the community. This project is not about short-term financial gain to the city, but it brings long-term sustainable benefit to all citizens of Bothell and represents a great investment to the future of Bothell. There's a Bothell Gateway signage that says, "Welcome to Bothell for a day, for a lifetime." This project will bring welcoming to all for a lifetime and beyond by creating housing that people can afford and a community gathering space that fosters a real sense of community. Hence, I urge you to support and approve of the LOI as presented, allowing us to move forward in addressing the needs that the city has already identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mary Jane Jagazinski. I hope I pronounced that correctly. You're muted, Mary Jane.
Thank you. Absolutely perfect. Honorable mayor, council members and staff, yes, I'm Mary Jane Jagazinski. I'm Senior Vice President of Development with Bridge Housing. Bridge is a 41-year-old nonprofit. We work across the entire Pacific coast. I've had the honor of actually having worked in another life, I guess, with the founder of Bridge many years ago. Today, we own 14,000 apartments across the Pacific coast, all affordable. And I say that because none of them are cookie cutter. They are all unique and seamlessly in the communities we work in. I wanted to touch on another point. I believe that we are aligned with the city's values, including sustainability. And there's really three levels. Sustainability is not only how we build and operate, but also where we locate. And having a affordable housing development that is on an infill site, Long Horse Creek, rather than in a greenfield where it's requiring, you know, extension of utilities, et cetera, is really a sustainable area. Secondly, you know, we provide sustainability for households, for families, for seniors, for our residents. Just like the city has a sustainable budget, and we do even as a nonprofit, it is important that families are able to live and work and thrive in the same communities. And the third level of sustainability is broader, and I think has to do with the economy of Bothell. Providing places for essential workers, for those who are the engine of the economic health of the city, is important. And I think that the proposed development and partnership with the United Methodist Church is one that will provide benefits for all, and I thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Next, we have Martin Lewin, who will be joining us in just a moment. Can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for having me today. As Amy mentioned, I'm Martin Lung. I am the Director for Acquisitions and Planning here at Bridge Housing. I also work with Mary Jane on this project here at Lot P. Thanks for having us today. For, I just want to speak, you know, in favor of the project and also talk a little bit more about our partnership with Bothell United Methodist Church over the past three years. We've been working together with Pastor Joyner and her congregation since 2022, and I think what really struck us when we first joined this partnership is really how much of this project is both envisioned and built by the community for the community. I think that passion really shows through in some of the people who spoke earlier today, and I'm sure will speak, you know, later this evening. Downtown Bothell has obviously transformed a lot in the past decade, and I think this proposal for Lot P really fits squarely into the city's vision to create a new heart for the city and really directly supports the council's own 2040 vision for a variety of housing types to solve, serve all income levels. Something that I really want to point out and emphasize is the fact that we've intentionally designed this project with over half of the homes with two and three bedrooms. So this is really suitable for families and intergenerational living, for folks with kids, as well as seniors aging in place. We're also planning to serve households that are earning 50% up to 60% of the area median income. So this is $52,000 for one person, all the way up to $98,000 for a four- or five-person family. As Mary Jane mentioned, these are folks that are the essential workers that really power the city's economies, working families, teachers, firefighters, store managers, solar panel installers, and technicians. So these are the folks that are, you know, working with us and working for us every day that you see on the streets of Bothell. So we really think that this project is going to be a bold step forward, and we're excited, you know, that the LOI is being discussed today. It's going to be essential for securing funding from the state later this year. We're excited to continue our partnership with the church, and I look forward to supporting the city to advance this vision for Lot P. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Diana, who did submit written comment, but if you're here in the audience, you also signed up. Great, go ahead to the podium. And while you're making your way to the podium, I'm going to say I'm going to apologize in advance to anybody who I mispronounced your last name. Go ahead, Diana. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, mayor, and also the city council for allowing me to speak today. I really appreciate this. I am actually speaking on the issue of rent stabilization. I live in Canyon Park RV and Mobile Home Park here in Bothell. Our rents are being raised to the point that we can no longer afford our rents. For those that don't know, if you live in a mobile home park or manufactured home park, you own your home, but you don't own the land that it sits on. So you're paying rent on that land. The issue is that many of our, in my park, actually, many of the residents are well into their 80s. We do have many, many senior citizens, because this is a 55 and over park. I, for one, I'm an advocate for seniors. You can call me the Australian Shepherd, if you will, because I heard them all. I check on them. I really have a deep emotion for what they are going through. It's not only for myself, but it's for them as well. And not only it's our park, but this is a national problem. I was on, I worked on a committee this past session. I worked with George Hurst, who is the city councilman of Linwood. We went through hours and hours of this bill, House Bill 2114, which is the rent stabilization bill, to present it to state legislatures. It hit the floor. It was actually passed through the House, but the Senate wouldn't entertain it. In that bill, we were asking for a 7% increase. That's not a lot. So what has happened in our park is last June, our park was sold to collective communities as several other parks in the Pacific Northwest have been. The month prior to the sale, the previous owner raised our rent by $100, and I'm speculating that this is because it's an incentive for buyers to purchase the park. This June, this month, we received another $100 increase for our rent. So we are now paying $820 plus garbage, water, and sewer. This may not seem like a lot, but we, I would say 95% of the residents of the park actually...
Thank you, Diana. Your time is up.
Thank you.
The council does have your written comments, and they will be made part of the record.
Thank you.
Next, we have Reverend Joe Kim, and I do see that we have somebody that signed up as a Bothell United Methodist guest. So I'm gonna bring them in, and we'll see if that's Mr. Kim. Hello. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Joe, and I get to serve as the pastor of Bothell United Methodist Church, a spiritual home of over 500 members, many of whom live, work, and play in our greater Bothell community. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you in support of the letter of intent and the Bothell Urban Project. You've heard and will continue to hear much about the benefits of the project itself and all the benefits of the ways that Bothell United Methodist Church, the Bothell Urban Project, and our partnership will support our community, but I wanted to start with just a quick personal story. There's a word in Korean. It's called uri, uri. And directly translated, uri simply means "our." Like, my family and I live in uri house, our house, or we cheer on uri mariners, our mariners. But there's a nuance to this word, because you see, in Korean, we don't use the singular possessive word for mine. Instead, everything is uri. Even though you and I don't have the same grandmother, in Korean, I refer, I would refer to her as uri grandmother. And even though you and I did not go to the same school, in Korean, I would say uri school. And in Korean, I would never refer to Bothell as my community. I would only and always say uri Bothell, uri community, our Bothell, our community. It is with this heart and the sense of the collective that our Bothell Urban Team has come before the council in hopes of addressing the significant needs and priorities of our city and our city's leadership. We truly believe that this project benefits the whole by addressing local access and... Hold on one second. I'm sorry. I gotta move. There's an ambulance coming behind me. All that to say, the time is now for us to address the needs of affordable housing in a safe and inclusive way for our community. Since 1885, we as a church and as individual citizens have taken seriously the call to addressing the needs of the community, and now we are ready to work alongside you and with you, just as we have done for the past 140 years. We don't do this alone. With Bridge Housing and with the city and with community partners and with all of you, we believe that it is possible for better today, not having to wait until tomorrow. I do ask that you support the Bothell Urban Project and move forward with that letter of intent, not for you and not for me, but for uri, for our community together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Heidi Shepherd.
Good evening. I'm not looking for ambulances, so hopefully this will be less exciting. Good evening, Mayor Thompson and council members. My name is Heidi Shepherd. I'm the Board President of the North Urban Human Services Alliance and a resident of Shoreline. I'm here tonight in full support of the Bothell Urban Project set for a study session this evening. This collaborative project, led in part by the Bothell United Methodist Church, has been many years in development. The last time, in fact, that it was before the council was in July 2023, and at that time, the city asked that the housing be primarily driven by family-focused units, guided by the 2040 vision of a welcoming and neighborly downtown. Since that time, the Bothell Urban Project with Bridge Housing has adjusted and fine-tuned its proposal to respond to your recommendations to create one, two, and three-bedroom units geared toward bringing families into the heart of the city. This project has been inclusive since the beginning with the goal of providing gathering spaces in the city, offices for easy access to human services, which is particularly exciting to NUSA, and 200 units of rental housing close to transit. It is this cooperative nature that is particularly exciting to NUSA, because the final product will be the result of incorporating all the needs and views of the full community, similar to the speaker that we just heard. NUSA urges you to give direction, to sign the letter of intent, which will allow the project to continue and will continue to create the much-needed housing for the future families of Bothell. I'd like to live in Bothell. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lori Dunham.
Hi, my name is Lori Dunham, and I live in Bothell. I've lived here for just over 20 years. Before that, just a little north in the Mill Creek area. I want to offer my support of this plan as well, and really, I don't have a lot to say. Everybody else has really covered the point so well. I'm a real estate agent, and I will tell you firsthand that housing prices to buy, I'll give you an example, a little about a thousand-square-foot home in downtown Bothell Canyon Park area, just recently closed, for $840. That's about $5,000 a month in mortgage after putting about $150,000 down. And I was helping a young couple last year, yeah, about a year ago, look for a studio apartment, and a studio apartment in Bothell Woodenville is almost $2,000 a month. So this would be a really needed thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stacy, here she comes, Stacy Valenzuela.
Hi, Stacy Valenzuela, Kenmore. Our 55-plus manufactured home community in Kenmore was sold late in 2022, as were three communities in Bothell, three in Linwood, most without notice or a chance to purchase in our residents' interests. Then, the out-of-state corporate investors collective community raised rents 17% to 30% on our seniors and those with disabilities. We are now facing another large 17% to 50% increase with added utilities. We are concerned, as rent is now higher than many of our homeowners' fixed incomes. HB 1598 passed and was effective July of 2023. However, too late for our communities, as well as several others across Washington, that investors quickly purchased prior to the law going into effect. If HB 1582 in 2019 and HB 1100 had passed in 2021, most of our most vulnerable homeowners, unsubsidized, struggling to make ends meet with incomes under $29,000, would not be facing losing their homes, being priced out due to high increases to possible homelessness, getting ill from being stressed, or some contemplating harming themselves. It feels like we are overlooked because moderate, affordable, and supportive housing are getting higher priority. We do not want to be a burden. However, we need your help to keep our homes. We need added protection preservation to stop from being priced out with increases, franchise fees, and taxes. We are now facing utility fees, unenforceable, noncompliant rules per manufactured homeowner rights. Using ARPA or other funds to possibly help to keep my neighbors out would help. Please allocate some of the funding to build 150% to 230% of below-barrier senior housing units. Please support Bill 2114 for rent stabilization at coal limits. For those on fixed incomes in our manufactured home communities, please find solutions to preserve and protect our manufactured home communities at the extremely low affordable housing unit levels. Please hear our cries for help through this crisis. You may reach out to me for any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Cosand. Matt Cosand, sorry.
Good evening. My name is Matt Cosand. I'm here in support of the Bothell Urban Project. I've lived in Bothell most of my life, originally moving to the Kenmore area in 1983 when it was still considered Bothell. And I see affordable housing as one of the biggest issues that our government needs to address today. My family was able to purchase a home in Bothell 21 years ago, and ever since, we've just watched prices climb. Last week, a report from NBC showed that my current salary, after 23 years of software development, would not meet the $181,000 income required to afford a home in King County. I don't know what the future looks like for my elementary, high school, and college-age children. I recently started attending Bothell United Methodist Church, which had already sold part of their land and established the Bothell Urban Project with goals of providing housing to lower-income brackets, office space for social services, and a public commons for rebuilding our post-pandemic community, also including a job training program. The current availability of Lot P perfectly aligns with this project. Close to mass transit, the library, and other city services, it connects its residents to the local economy, and its public cafe and meeting space is centrally located for other residents. Using this land as the foundation for the Bothell Urban Project is an investment in the community. Ownership and management in the land stays in a Bothell-based nonprofit organization, where a stronger community is the primary goal, instead of maximizing profits of the real estate developer. The city gets affordable housing as required by the Growth Management Act. Teachers and firefighters who work in Bothell are able to live in Bothell. We all get additional public indoor and outdoor space for years to come without burdening the city staff or budget. Bothell United Methodist Church has been a part of this community for over 138 years and has a history of incubating community service programs like Hope Link, Bothell Community Kitchen, and now Northwest Community Solutions, the new 501(c)(3) that would acquire this land. By partnering this new organization with the established Bridge Housing organization, we get to draw from the experience of a team already managing more than 125 housing projects on the West Coast. Volunteering is a significant portion of how I spend my time. Whether it's 27 years as a search-and-rescue member or spending just a few days with Whale Scout reclaiming the old Wayne Golf Course, this work has solidified in me a belief that I can only truly prosper when my neighbors also prosper. In the last year, I have found that the people at the Bothell United Methodist Church also put into action their claim that all are welcome here, regardless of gender, race, or economic bracket. The Bothell Urban Team has been working with city staff to ensure reasonable agreement can be reached and that sufficient escape hatches are in place. With grant funding deadlines fast approaching, a small delay in approving this Letter of Intent will have a large impact on the schedule and how quickly this housing project can help address a growing need. I would request that the council directly direct the city manager to approve the current LOI and proceed to negotiate a sales agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have David Dorian. He was there, and then he left, so hold on one second. David, can you hear us?
Hello there. Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I wanted to join today, whoops, I dropped my phone, to say a few words in favor of the Bothell Urban Project. It's been, it's been really great to be able to stay up to date about the project over the past few years. There's a very transparent and visible website that the church has been maintaining. I actually found out about the project just through Googling about affordable housing in the Bothell and North Shore area, and the website was one of the first things that came up. It's very well organized. It contains a lot of information about the project, about the level of affordability, about all the steps, but must be going back at least three years now that the church has been through with the project. And I really appreciate that level of transparency, which I think is more than you would get with a private developer. Obviously, that level of transparency is necessary when we're working with affordable housing, and they're looking for in-kind benefit from the city here of an investment of land. But I think the direction that I'm seeing from staff is correct, that there is the benefit that you are gaining from ceding the land to the church for this purpose. I know from Kenmore, where I'm a resident, I should have mentioned that, resident in Kenmore, but northeast Kenmore, so very close to Bothell and this area of Bothell, the, we had to not only give the investment of the land, but also give other money from the city in order to try and drive some of these projects, like a similar project, I guess would be the Hope Link project that we're still hoping to drive in Kenmore, which would be around about 132 rental units, around about 50% to 60% AMI targeted at families. So again, a very similar project. But I believe even in that project, we had to give city money in order to support the project as well as giving land. So the sense that there's land being given here, yes, that's an investment, but it's an investment that you're getting benefit because it's very hard to build this type of property, this type of affordable housing that will benefit teachers, firefighters, key workers. I mean, if someone mentioned going up to $96,000, well, that's above the starting salary for a police officer in Bothell, for example. So that type of affordability for our key workers, I think, is very important and does have benefit to the city that would be commensurate with what's being laid out there in the Letter of Intent. So I just want to commend everybody on the visibility, the transparency of what's been going on here, and also say a word in favor of approving the Letter of Intent this evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, David. Next, we have David Levitan.
Hi. My name is David Levitan, and I'm a resident of Bothell. First, I'd like to thank the council and staff for working to increase the amount of housing in Bothell, especially for those who do not earn as much as many of us do. I know this has been a lot of work and is critical to the future of Bothell. The project and this agenda item is certainly exciting, but the process thus far and the lack of communication raises many questions. In reviewing the July 11, 2023 council meeting, it is clear that the council wants to prioritize the amount of housing and the public benefit of this project. I agree with these goals, and because of that, I want the city to ensure that any project involving Lot P aligns to those goals. I frame my questions here with the fact that this is an over $6 million use of money. First, there's minimal information about this project and was available as two years old. Even compared to the 2023 meeting, the Letter of Intent indicates that substantial changes have been made. For example, a substantially different number of apartments. The people of Bothell are being asked to invest $6 million into this project. What are we investigating? I also want to ask whether the council has carefully considered all options. For example, could we serve more people by selling Lot P on the open market and then investing that money into affordable housing on a different site? Would a long-term lease be more beneficial? I don't know the answers to these questions, but I hope this can be discussed. Second, it is extremely worrisome that this project was selected without any competitive bidding process or any investigations into other options. Could another organization provide a better project? The Bothell United Methodist Church is, of course, a part of Bothell and has such known their city well. Their deep knowledge comes from profound positives. But the close links between the leadership of Bothell Urban and members of Bothell's government can also make healthy discussion more difficult and lead to the appearance of conflicts of interest. Finally, I see a vision of the building, but what comes after? I have not seen any information on how this will be managed, or whether it's sustainable. Are their financials sound? What happens in 20 years if Bothell United Methodist Church loses interest in this project? What happens if they cannot maintain the property? None of this is answered. I would love to see a more affordable housing built in Bothell, and this project has much promise. But the process needs to be done in a way where the public knows that we are receiving the most value and that the long-term viability of the project is sound. My goal here is not to be against this project, but to make sure that Bothell's investment in affordable housing is successful. I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Charles Malden.
My name is Wim Malden, and I'm a retired Baptist preacher, which means that I can't say anything in less than three minutes, so I wrote it down. I have, as I say, I'm a retired American Baptist pastor and community organizer, and after retiring a few years ago, became part of Bothell United Methodist Church. My entire life has been dedicated to creating community, and I came to see that Bothell United Methodist has that same dedication. It's a congregation that faces outward, unconditionally welcoming everyone who comes in and taking every opportunity to go out, investing its time and people and resources into this community. Our, your goal of creating affordable housing, especially for the 50% to 60% of area median income people, shows that you have an understanding of what a real community is. It includes hard-working people of a variety of income levels. It also shows your understanding about building community is hard work. It demands diligence and experience and skill. Bothell United Methodist has taken on this work with you by investing its team of highly skilled professionals in engineering and architecture and construction management, professionals who have specific experience with affordable housing, professionals who have each spent hundreds of hours listening and responding and re-presenting over and over again to you and the city staff to create the best possible affordable housing project. We see other cities let those opportunities slip through their fingers by actively resisting or passively allowing projects to pass the window of opportunity. I ask that you please not do that. After months and years of refining, I ask that you take this action on this Letter of Intent to deepen and strengthen our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Swanson, who, I'm trying, there he comes. Thank you. Mr. Swanson, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, Laura. Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I'm a 30-year Bothell resident, and I live up here on West Hill. My critique of how Lot P is being handled will be confined to my written comments that I submitted earlier today. There will be no negative comments in my testimony now. I think we're missing a fantastic opportunity. A juxtaposition of several things. This is a multi-generational, historical opportunity for the city of Bothell. Lot P can be made into a natural pressure fountain park where it cools the water from Horse Creek and returns it back to the Sumamish River cooler and cleaner. There's $130 million available, where King County will match funds we raise more than six to one. No, at the limit of six to one. We can gain access to that revenue. So I'd like to open your minds and think about an alternate possibility that could be Lot P. We have a natural pressure fountain park. We tie it to the $130 million of salmon restoration funds. For every dollar we can raise, King County will match it six times. I'd like you to think about what this could mean to the revenue sources and the sustainability of the city. People would be led to the fountain park over the bridge, going through the downtown area. It would pull the students at our colleges down as a destination place. It has an opportunity to be a multi-generational cultural awareness for the indigenous peoples. We can give indeed over 20,000-square-foot lot to restore the indigenous people's presence in the city of Bothell. This park will be open for generations, for the young and the old. It will be equitable across every community that's here. It will be forever be used. It will pull revenue across from the Burke-Gilman Trail. It will help restore the salmon.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up. Thank you. Next, I have, I'm gonna mispronounce this, I'm sorry, Abbas Batia. Hopefully, I didn't do too bad, but you can correct me.
Hi, I'm Abbas Batia. I'm a resident of Bothell. I'm here to speak on the topic of the lot. I resonate with the council's notion of maximizing the public benefit from the lot. Affordable units with quality of life, public open spaces, and retail areas are great ways to benefit the public. However, there should be ways to achieve all of that without giving away the lot. I disagree with the aspect of giving away the lot for free. Many other residents feel the same way for a myriad of reasons. The lot was purchased and cleaned up across the span of last 14 years with taxpayers' money and dollars. With such a massive investment of time, effort, and money, I understand an action is desired from this lot, and this is an opportunity for the city to favorably control that action and see the future of this lot that benefits the public and the residents across. However, I have not seen any justification to get the lot for free so far. I have been to pass recordings, the Letter of Intent, and the BUMC webpage publishing the proposal. The Letter of Intent from BUMC merely parrots the council objective to maximize the affordable housing units. All the key details are missing. I've learned about them so far over here from the comments from various members of the community, but I haven't seen those details laid out in the Letter of Intent. I'm against handing over a city-owned property to a religious and privately-owned organization for free. The city has spent millions of dollars gathered from residents towards the purchase and cleanup Lot P. Giving the lot away for free is not right. If the intention is to facilitate the construction of affordable housing, then I would like to encourage and ask if the below options have been considered. City can directly contract the building partners over here, which is the Bridge Housing and other partners which have been named in the process like Habitat for Humanity. Have city considered selling the land to BUMC and these building partners at a price that recuperates the original buying price? Have other areas of Bothell considered? The downtown area has six-plus affordable housing properties within a one-mile radius and many more at marked-price apartments and townhomes. This can put a lot of stress on the current infrastructure. So my question is, have other areas in Bothell been considered for such great opportunities? And the objective to create another type of housing which is accessible to more folks can still be implemented without handing over an asset to a private organization. I would like to consider questions like, why is BUMC the only party considered over here? Why is BUMC, like, what potential and tangible benefits will the residents reap from giving away the lot? How will the infrastructure handle the increased load? What percentage of these units are affordable? That's a very key and crucial question.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. That is all I have. Mayor Thompson, however, if there's anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak, please step to the podium, state your name. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Dick Payler, a resident of Bothell. I've heard a lot of good things about the project that's been proposed. I think the goals are great. But I agree with a couple of the other prior speakers here that my understanding is this party is the only party you've spoken to for apparently three years about doing just this on this property. And, you know, if you recall, when you build a new fire station, you go seek proposals from as many contractors as you can to know that you're getting the best deal. It doesn't sound like that has happened here. I'm really quite stunned that the city owning this property, you have a goal of creating affordable housing on it and other services, that you wouldn't put out a request for proposal from the many other qualified, very qualified nonprofit developers who might come with better ideas. Again, I mean no disrespect at all to the church and Bridge Housing, nothing. They put a lot of effort into this. But you can't possibly know if you're getting the best value for the taxpayers of Bothell if you've only talked to one party. I mean, I think it's irresponsible, quite honestly. Maybe I'm wrong, and you can, I'll stand corrected if my assumption is wrong. But... But I think it would be irresponsible to move forward with only talking to one party and get to this stage. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Please step to the podium. State your name. If you're in the virtual audience and you wish to speak, please raise a hand, and we'll panel you in when we're done with those folks in the audience. Thanks.
Mayor, council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for your continued progress working with this community on this project, which we've been calling Bothell Urban. As you've heard over and over, it's gonna offer about 200 apartments that will be affordable to people making 50% to 60% of the area median income. These are workers in our area. We'll have an open community space like the hangar at Third Place Commons. A few small offices for nonprofit human services agencies, such as those that would help the community court and a cafe. Cities all around us are contributing land and participating together with community groups and nonprofit developers to ensure that people of all income levels can live in our communities, especially on transit routes and in locales zoned for this kind of dense accommodation and close to services. This one-time investment of land into the project will assure a lifetime of community benefits returned to the community by organizations with the expertise to make that happen. Please direct the staff to sign this LOI and move towards a purchase and sale agreement for this project. This timing is critical. These kinds of projects take decades. It's already been years. And the longer we wait, the worse the numbers get. Signing now gets us into the funding rounds, which are one time a year. If we miss this, it puts us down the road another year. And as you know, this has been publicly discussed here since at least July of 2021. There are many more steps after this, but this step gets us closer to making it a reality. Bothell United Methodist Church, a community of a few hundred people here, we've talked with groups at the Chamber, the Rotary, our neighbors, several city council meetings, the Human Services Focus Groups, NUSA, and many others. And while there will always be people just finding out about this project, this project team will continue in the community to be available, since we are community members as well. In addition to much staff time and group work, as you know, Bothell United Methodist Church is putting in over $1.5 million into this project. And the expenses of operating the open and inclusive space will be the responsibility of a nonreligious nonprofit organization, unlike in the city of Kenmore, where the city budget pays for the operation of the hangar. Bothell United Methodist Church will not be making any money on this. In fact, it's quite the opposite. The church takes very seriously the ongoing stewardship of the land to make sure that the desires of the city will continue to be met. Transferring the land ownership allows for more density due to RCW 358.63.300 and for more points when we apply for funding. This project fits the needs that many have noted, including the city council vision. It's not everything. It doesn't answer all the needs. There are many more housing opportunities needed and also more community spaces. But it's a great start, and you have the ability to make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please state your name at the podium.
Yes. My name's Nancy Schaefer. I actually live in affordable housing, in the shag in downtown Bothell. So I have a lot of personal experience for the past five years of living in downtown and living in an affordable housing. I'm all for affordable housing. I love this plan. My only concern is... There was actually two concerns. There's no signage on the property to indicate that there's anything going on. So that's a little bit concerning that the public doesn't know. I just found out about this a couple days ago. So it's all new to me, and we live right there. So... And I also know that this is about a $10 million investment for the city with the amount of money we paid for the property, how much we invested in cleaning it up, and how much it's actually about $6 million worth of bra land. So it's a $10 million investment. I believe the citizens of Bothell should be allowed to vote on that. That's my biggest thing. This is our community. We do need sustainable housing. I live in one, and we need more. We always will need more. But I don't think that the citizens of Bothell should not have an opportunity to have a voice. That's my biggest thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ray Thomas, 40-year resident of Bothell. I live in a home that would be considered extremely affordable when I bought it 40 years ago. It's not now. And more and more homes in Bothell every day are becoming only affordable to elites, and we need to stop that. You need to turn it back, turn it down, listen to the people who have been concerned with these problems for years, and move forward with this project. You can't move quickly enough. I also am a board member of Camp United We Stand, which is leaving North Lake Lutheran Church in Kenmore, moving to Holler Lake for a period of time. We have already lost 10 residents there because of the move. It doesn't accommodate their work, their ability to transport from there to their work sites. We need affordable housing 10 years ago. We need to not only get this project moving, we need to take the momentum from that, go to the state legislature. We need changes in our laws, national, state, and local, to turn back the tide of extraction economics and look at investment economics. Investment in people. Our people, our community. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all I have, Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, moving on to reports. First up is the city manager report. City manager.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, city council. Do have a couple of quick updates tonight, and then we will also be having a presentation from our partners at the Washington State Department of Transportation. First of all, I just wanted to reiterate something that was part of the coming events at the top of the meeting, which is that we are continuing to work to support small businesses and folks with business mindsets of ideas that maybe they don't know how to turn that into a small business or not. And so did want to promote that July 10th through 31st, there will be a series of small business workshops coming up again. More information is on our website. Encourage anybody with interest to take a look. Also, wanted to note, as you may recall, around a month or two ago, we had started a partnership with Startup 425, which also supports small businesses through a variety of means, including coworking events. We hosted one recently in Bothell and have another one coming up on July 24th from 10:30 to 4 o'clock here at City Hall. If anyone is interested in scheduling time to be part of that experiment, they're welcome to sign up at startup425.org for more information. And also, continuing on a co-theme of the Fourth of July, as well as small business, our Pop Shops will be hosting events on the Fourth of July. Really encourage the community to come out for all of the events. And we listed many of them up on the board, including a car show, a pancake feed, the parade, the children's parade. All of those are exciting. From 10 to 5, there's also more activity than normal going on down at the Pop Shops. So encourage people to stop by for that as well. Also, on the theme of the Fourth of July, I do want to just acknowledge that next week, we do have a council meeting scheduled that's on the 2nd of July. And as the council knows, we have a lot of operations that go on for the week of the Fourth. We welcome so many neighbors to come in and enjoy downtown, which puts a long checklist for our Parks Department, our police, our fire, and our public works team. So we've had a bit of shuffle on the council agenda. We had a presentation that is not quite ready to come. And so I just wanted to acknowledge the council. It's a shorter agenda next week. If there's interest in counseling, we can have that conversation now. Conversely, in separate thought, that's July 2nd. We also have, in council protocol, that, as you know, we meet the first three Tuesdays of every month, or sometimes on the Fourth Tuesday like tonight when things come up. And then also, the council has historically taken a recess for the month of August. With July being a five-Tuesday month, that could potentially mean for a six-week break, which is a really long time. So one of the things that I just wanted to note is we have been polling with council members about personal calendars to see if you have availability on July 30th if we needed to host an additional meeting. I will say the last regular scheduled meeting of July, July 16th, is turning into quite an affair. I think we're a little over four hours. So if there's a need, we'll be reaching out at a future meeting in July and suggesting a special meeting on July 30th. Just want to keep that on everybody's radar. But in the meantime, as well, as we pause here, I will take any feedback if anybody has strong feelings about, again, next week we might have a bit of a shorter night, but we'll see what life brings us to. So with that, I'll pause before introducing our colleagues from Washington State Department of Transportation.
Councilor Rogers.
Thank you, city manager, for just giving really practical reasons why we might switch up the schedule for next month. And I would say that I'm fine with doing that. You know, if my colleagues agree, then I'd love to hear from them, too.
Councilor Dodd.
Thank you. I think that I'll be able to set aside the video game I planned to play that night to be here instead. So I'm fine with whatever works for everybody.
Councilor Curd.
I, too, am fairly flexible. And so I think that I'm fine with switching it up if needed.
Rather than all of us say we're fine with it, is anybody not fine with it?
I guess the only thing is the question on meeting next week. How long of a meeting do you think that's going to be?
Yeah, we're looking right now at around an hour, based on our projections. So we do have a visit from Snowmush County Councilmember Mead planned for that evening. We're gonna do an update about Fourth of July activities from our Parks Department and our Police Department, and a consent calendar and a few other things, too.
Okay, so I guess the question to council members are, do you want to, you know, make next week's meeting go and then just jump and put the 30th on the calendar?
Councilor Curd. I think that if it's... It doesn't seem like convening all the staff for an hour meeting is really responsible use of anybody's time and the resources of the city. So I would propose that we cancel the meeting on the 2nd, if that's the Tuesday, the first Tuesday, and then move that kind of agenda down and filter it through and have an extra meeting in the end of July instead. It's because the month works that way.
Councilmember Manke.
I agree. I think staff's gonna be working very hard on the Fourth of July. Love to give them an hour back if they don't have to be here that night. So supportive of that and adding the last day of July, last Tuesday of July.
I think we're... Oh, well, Councilor Lawrence.
The only thing is, if we could get Jared Mead another day.
Absolutely. We'll reach out to him.
That would be great. Even if it's September or something, that would be great.
Our city clerk has been doing great work of coordinating on that. So I think she may have even planted that seed that it might be coming. So we'll take care of that. All right.
I think we're all fairly in agreement on that.
Great. We'll move forward with the cancellation notice for next week, get a special meeting notice for July 30th, and we'll find out how to connect video game systems to the projector. All right, with that, we do have one additional briefing tonight. There is some information in your packet, and we do have a presentation coming from Washington State Department of Transportation. I invite them to come to the table. We are being joined tonight to hear more about Bus Rapid Transit that's coming forward on Interstate 405. We're joined by WashDOT employees Lauren Penning and Evelyn Powell. And I will just say, as they get set up, I was in a meeting earlier today at the city of Shoreline hearing a little bit more from Sound Transit staff about the 522 corridor moving forward. There's lots of work happening and coming. So we'll have an update from Sound Transit probably sometime in the fall as well. But excited to hear about the additional connection of... Every time this comes up, we hear about how in Bothell, this is where we actually have three Bus Rapid Transit lines between community transit and then with Sound Transit on two highways. So there's a lot happening in Bothell and a lot coming. So with that, I will turn it over to our guests for their presentation.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Johan Jorn, the lead development engineer with the... I serve as the project liaison for the WashDOT 405 ETL project. We've been working in close collaboration with WashDOT and the design builder, Skanska, in an effort to ensure a successful project that benefits the community and the greater Puget Sound region. With me tonight is Evelyn Powell, the project director, who will be presenting a brief status update on the project.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Powell. I work for the Washington Department of Transportation. I am the project director for the I-45 Seiral 527 Improvement Project. Thank you so much for inviting me here today to provide you a project update and a project overview. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank city for your continued support on this project. And so the presentation today will quickly go over the project overview of this project, and I'm also gonna provide you some project updates regarding the latest progress that we have made. And I will also be providing information how you can stay informed with the latest progress on this project. So the I-45 Seiral 167 corridor is important for the state and the region. Together, it forms a 50 miles of multimodal corridor that includes a reliable express toll lane system, provides a choice to user when needed the most. It also provides the infrastructure for the new BRT station that we're building for Sound Transit. Currently, we have five active construction projects on the I-45 corridor. Three of them are located in Bellevue North. And today's concentration, we'll be talking about the I-45 regard to 527 project, which is showing in the middle of this slide with a blue star. And we currently just transitioned into major construction. So the I-45 Burt Card to Stay Route 527 Improvement Project is one of the key project in the I-45 master plan. The project will improve multimodal transportation system and move more people more efficiently and across all length. This will contribute to economic vitality by investing in key Bothell destination from just south of Seiral 522 interchange to Seiral 527 interchange. The project was developed with multi-agency and with our transit partner with community's best interest. Sound Transit is our funding partner. They will help us develop this project. And on the screen is a list of some of the key elements that we're improving on this project. The project will extend the Du Express toll lane and widening the highway in both I-45 in the southbound and northbound, which will give transit a better speed and reliability, making Sound Transit BRT possible with bus planning to arrive every 10 minutes. And we'll also be able to more efficiently manage the toll system with two toll lanes, with both lanes. We'll also be adding direct access ramp at Seiral 527 interchange and Seiral 522 to make it easier for transit user and express toll lane user to get on and off of I-45. And we'll also be building three BRT station for Sound Transit. This will bring option for people who chose to bike or transit or walk or drive. Besides multimodal transportation improvement, we are also addressing six fish passage barrier to create a healthier fish habitat. And the project will also address preservation and maintenance of the existing transportation infrastructure with a new pavement and striping. And we'll also be addressing the state of goods of a repair of the barrier guardrail ITS and also the seismic resiliency of our existing structure. guardrail, ITS, and also the seismic resiliency of our existing structure. The project is using design build delivery method, meaning we, as a WashDOT, we are developing the design up to 30%. And then, we're going to hand it over to our design builder to finish the design and construction. In the next few slides, we'll go over some high-level changes that we will be accomplishing on this project. And I will go from the southern end of the project all the way up to the very northern of the project. So, here is the current I-45 near the Breakyard Park and Ride, looks like today. And here's the future I-45 Breakyard Park and Ride looks like. And I do want to know, in the next few slides with the future rendering, some of the details might not look, might changes a little bit, as we are still working on the design on this project. So, you can see that we are building a BRT station in the middle of I-45. It's an elevated inline station with a direct access ramp in to and from the express toll lane. While we're building the BRT station, we are also reconfiguring the existing park and ride facilities, so they can tie into the future BRT stations, which will include a new pedestrian bridge connect to the station. So, the transit elements also includes the bus platform, plaza, elevator, and stairway. The station will have a similar feel and feels and look as the current inline stations currently at the northeast 128th in City of Kirkland. So, now, we continue travel up in the north at the I-45 Seiral 522 interchange. And this is what it looks like today. And this is what the future interchange looks like. We will be reconfiguring the entire interchange to include the express toll lane, direct access ramp in the middle of I-45. And in order to accomplish that, we'll be demolishing some of the existing structure and adding three new bridges in this area. In addition, we'll be adding three new, three new singleized intersection in the State Route 522, so we can allow the region transit service to the new BRT stops and direct access in and out of the express toll lane system. There's also a lot of coordination with the city and Sound Transit to make it sure that everything is connecting correctly. And the other key components I want to highlight in this area is that we are also building a transit hub for Sound Transit. The hub will include a pickup and drop-off location and a new path for people who want to walk or bike, and that will connect to the North Creek trip. And now, we are at the very north end of the project, which is near the Canyon Park and Ride, and this is what it looks like today. And this is what the Canyon Park and Ride will look like in the future. So, very similar to the Breakyard Park and Ride future facility. We will be building a new direct access ramp from the west to the middle of I-45 for the BRT station in the express toll lane. We are also reconfiguring, improving the surrounding transportation facilities, and we're also improving the bike and pedestrian access to the existing transit hub and update the, and reconfiguring the pedestrian bridge out there as well. All right, so here's a very high-level construction milestone that we have on the project. So, the project have reached Notice to Proceed last fall, and we are transitioning to major construction this spring. The project is scheduled to reach substantial completion in the, at the end of 2028. We had a groundbreaking ceremony on Monday, May the 20th, and we joined by many of the Bothell community members for this celebration. And Bothell Mayor Thompson spoke at the event. Uda Bothell Chancellor and Castoria College President was also attending, representing some of the community's aspect for this project and help ceremoniously breaking the ground. Thank you for all those who were able to attend. And a video of the highlights of this event is also available on the WashDOT project website. We started the project, we couldn't start this project without all of your collaboration and support. So, thank you again for your continued support on this project. Here is what we have accomplished so far. Early work includes the field survey and geotechnical borings and vegetation and tree removal. Most of the tree and vegetation removals are at the northeast and southeast corner of this interchange. In April, we have also established a work zone by shifting the westbound State Route 522 lanes. We reduce, also reduce the speed in this area to 35 miles per hour to ensure the safety of our construction worker during construction. The speed will maintain in its permanent configuration, as we are also building three intersection on State Route 522. Recently, our design builder has also mobilizing construction equipment in this area. And next up, we'll be working heavily in this interchange. We're working on ground improvements on the south and north of the Samamish River at the northeast and southeast corner of this interchange. We're using deep soil mixing and stone column methods by incorporating concrete and stone column into subsurface to improve the ground, so we can build the future structure in order to build the future ramps. And we'll be also working on utility relocations in this area and throughout various location on the project. And we'll be also building retaining walls along I-45 northbound in this interchange sections. The public will be expecting, will see some power driving and by using the hammer, which could be loud during the daytime in July and August. We're also currently working on a notification to the surrounding communities. The other components will also be working as well in the summer is the payment overlay throughout various location on this project. And the traveling public should expect weekday night closures, as we're making progress at the work zone near this interchange. The closure will be posted on WashDOT website and WashDOT app. We have a project outreach team, and these are the methods and tools that we're using to keep the community informed during the construction throughout the project area. Coming up soon is our next project quarterly update, which will happen in July the 17th. These quarterly update meetings are hosted online and will be recorded, so the community and the stakeholder can watch at their convenience. We are also regularly updating our project website and send out email notification when there's a big milestone and traffic impact. As we're moving through the construction, the best way to keep, to stay informed is to subscribe to our email updates. Please email to the address and to be request to be added. We're also checking, you can also check out our project website for the latest update as well. And the best way to reach out to the project team is to utilize the construction hotline. It's being monitored on weekday from 8:00 to 5:00, and the staff will respond within 24 hours. Thank you.
Councilor Rose?
Sorry.
It looked like you were going that way.
I thought Councilmember Curd was faster on the draw than I was. But, well, I, the new construction, I mean, we've seen it. Anybody who's driven on 405 has seen this pattern of this, of managing transit. And a question popped into my head, how long has this trend been going for managing? Are we the first ones to set up this center going in and out, or is there's other parts of the country that have this center transit lane that goes up on, has an elevated?
Oh, the elevated inline station?
Right, right.
Yeah, so currently, City of Kirkland has one at northeast 128th Street. That's elevated inline station in the middle of I-45 connect to the express.
So, are we trend setters, then, Pacific Northwest? Does that happen? We are, okay. And then, the other question is a comment. Driving 522 out to Woodinville, I feel like the little old lady from Pasadena, because I'm a firstborn and follow most rules, and I just watch cars zip by consistently on that 35 mile an hour. And I don't know how you manage it, but, but I notice and I get frustrated by it. So, I hope, you know, people start to be cognizant that there are people out there working and making changes for our, for our highway.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Curd?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for coming here to give us an update. I know we've seen the changes, if we've been around in the area, and it's kind of stunning to see how big of a project this is. So, good luck on quite a big capital project. I think one of the, I have a lot of questions, but one of the, I can, I can email. One of the questions I want to bring forward is piggybacking off of the 35 mile an hour zone. I've noticed that there are signs, but what are we doing to protect worker safety over the next four years in that area, given the fact that people aren't really slowing down based on signage?
Yeah, so, the project team and the contractor will continue monitoring the driver behavior. There are tools that we are also utilizing, and we definitely are monitoring, see how things are going. And one of the tools that I can think of the top of my head right now, we are also considering perhaps have a Washington State Patrol out there, kind of enforce and encourage a good drive behaviors. That's something that we're also considering right now. But there are also other signing or other traffic coming tools that we can also use. But right now, we're just monitoring how their traffics are going. We also know it's been two months, so it'll also take some time, perhaps getting to that driver behavior. But yes, that's some of the stuff that we are paying attention, for sure.
That's heartening to hear. Thank you. And then, I have questions about maybe impacts to groundwater condition and surface waters. Is that, are there documents online, like an EIS or something that I can access there? And where would the public go to find that?
Yeah, so we do have a public project website, Adam Moore website, and it's in the appendices. And we do have all the NIPA EIS, all the environmental related document in the appendix E, actually, in the appendices documents.
That's helpful. Thanks for that cue.
Councilor Dodd?
Thank you. I actually found the EIS when I was looking for the answer to my question. So, it is there. So, thank you for the presentation. It's pretty exciting. As the City Manager said, we're going to have three Bus Rapid Transit routes, which feels awesome. And I had some questions around, for the, for the 522 station, what do the bike and pedestrian facilities look like? Are they along roads? Are they fully separate? What does that experience look like? I couldn't quite tell from the image.
Yeah, so, we're still working on the design on that stuff. So, yeah, maybe I can bring an update. I know I'm supposed to come back every quarter, so maybe when the project progresses along, I can have more rendering available. But yeah, we're currently still working on the design in that area.
I'm really curious about that, and especially also when it comes to the Canyon Park Park and Ride. And same question, but expanded, and this isn't all on WashDOT. It would also be the city, so, sorry, everybody. But the bike and pedestrian facilities to get to the Canyon Park Park and Ride are not great. They're not super safe. When I used to use it every day, I would end up getting dropped off there instead of utilizing bike or walking, because I had a small child and I was fearful of not being there for him. So, is there a project to help make the connection safer to actually use these bike and pedestrian facilities? Because if it's only within that project realm, we're going to miss people who are coming from their homes to get there.
Councilmember Dodd, if I may, and you may have more information on this, but just as a quick reminder, too, is that last year in the budget process, we did amend our budget. There was funding available from Sound Transit to improve the pedestrian and bike facilities. So, we do have that, that work is being funded for by Sound Transit. The biggest thing there is locking in the projected costs that'll be happening in the future. So, the city may have to kick in some. But there will be some improvements. There may be others, but I just wanted to remind council that we do have, we do have some funding coming.
Can we get, at some point, a comprehensive overview of, like, what does that look like walking from 228th and Bothell Highway to the Park and Ride, or from Thrasher's Corner to the, you wouldn't walk probably from, all the way from Thrasher's Corner, but just an idea of how that's all going to come together? It feels like there's pieces and optimism, but I would like to know more.
That was rather personal that I wouldn't walk from that. That's probably true. We can, we'll try and pull some more information together. And again, if WashDOT has more information, I'm happy to have you add on.
I know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Broldurks?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate you guys coming to give this presentation to us tonight. I think we've all seen changes happening on our roadways in the area, and I think there's interest and curiosity from the community. I think it's especially important that you're coming every quarter, because we'll be able to see the progress that's being made. And it'll start to, I think, make more sense to us as we, you know, as you go from your, your idea design to, like, actual implemented design. So, yeah, thanks so much for being here and, and for helping us learn how to navigate the system in terms of communications and updates. So, I really appreciate that portion of your presentation, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. No questions from me. I just wanted to express appreciation, like others have, for coming tonight and sharing the update. I am a bus rider at one of these stations. I've ridden from another one, so I've used two of the three frequently. Right now, the express buses are only coming every 30 minutes, so I will very much enjoy in a few years the 10-minute service. So, thank you so much for doing this. Look forward to these safety improvements as well. I think it's going to do a lot for our community.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. If, just to piggyback on what Councilmember Dodd was talking about, if you go to slide 13, I think it is 13. Oh, no, the one, maybe the one after, with the rendering of, oh, 12. Oh, this one, right up, that one. So, this one, I'm using my mouse, but you can't see it over here, so there you go. Yeah, if you come from the northwest corner, this is the thing that Councilmember Dodd was mentioning, because if you're on northwest corner, this is where, and then you go above or to the, you know, to the south, this is not north, northwest on this picture. But anyway, that's where houses are, but it's really hard to go northbound to that station right here, to go, you know, to, going northbound. You have the Park and Ride on the right-hand side, but if you don't drive and you want to walk from your house, say, for example, how do you, so I just wanted to confirm or just add my voice to that question that Councilmember Dodd asked, is how do we make it safe to get to, for example, northbound station for pedestrians and bikers? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I don't know if you have finalized, if you have answers, but in the future, maybe in the, when you get closer to actual, like, build design, that'll be helpful. Thank you.
The question that I had is, will the pedestrian flyovers have both stairs and an elevator?
That's correct.
Awesome. I was really happy to hear that you guys are looking at trapping calming to keep workers safe, because none of us want to see a tragedy as part of this project. So, do what you have to do, and you will have full support from us. You have probably noticed that pedestrian and bike connections are very, very critical to this council and our perception of how successful this project is. So, please make them as safe as possible if they're in design right now, and we'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes the City Manager Report section.
Awesome. Thank you. And thanks to our friends at WashDOT for coming.
Oh, thank you.
All right, next up is council committee reports, community reports, and conversations. All right, next up after that is projected agenda discussion.
Okay, fine, I'll go.
Who's on first over there?
He had his light on, again. Any rate, I appreciate it. One was, I know a couple of our members couldn't go to AWC last week, and I brought stickers for everybody that said, "I love my city," and evidently, I loved that at home. So, my apologies. Some great workshops. I'm torn between, do I try to do a verbal summary now, or do I spread the torture out? There was some, there were some really interesting points. I went to a emergency services, and they talked about, you know, two weeks ready and the need. Washington State, they were listing off all the things that could possibly, if you, if you are, like, fear prone at all of all the things that could go wrong, Washington State has a lot. And we're either number two or number three in the country for things that could go south. So, it was, it was, it was an eye-opener for me. And then, there was another one, I'll try to be brief, because it's really not meant to be a try to be brief because it's really not meant to be a criticism of everyone, but it was, it was an encouragement to me. They had an open general session where they brought, the conversation was, how can we all get along? Because in recent public history, it has been bad to be, to, it's frowned upon, to meet in the middle and go both ways. And they had a panel up there. One was an R, the rest were Ds, and they were all talking about how we need to get back to be a functioning society. It's not a winner takes all mindset. We need to have more of a mindset of meeting in the middle on common ground that everybody can agree on. And I appreciated that. The one R, JT Wilcox also said, "Look, ours are just as guilty as anybody else of saying, 'I'm going to not do this bill because it doesn't have everything in it I want.'" So, that was, that was encouraging to hear, that mindset. The other thing was, got to tour the park in Marshall Park that, this is my second time to see the new playground equipment there, and I hadn't seen this. Instead of a skate park, I believe they call it a roller park, and it's so anybody with wheels can participate in it. And I thought that was really fascinating. It looks a little different, but that was, that was probably the coolest thing that I thought, boy, Bothell could do that, and a lot of different people on wheels could, could enjoy that. So, AWC next year is in Kennewick. It'd be fun to, you know, represent. And then the other thing that I wanted to mention is, this, the month of June is Alzheimer Awareness Brain Health Month, and it's a good time. If you're, if you're interested in dementia or brain health awareness, there's a lot of good stuff that's out there right now because everyone's, if they haven't been touched by someone with dementia in their family, in their inner circle, they will be. Statistically, they will be. So, that's, that's what I wanted to talk with you guys about.
Councilmember Manki.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two ads from me. I'm going to echo, the park tour was pretty amazing. Seeing an inclusive park and how they built this park was pretty cool. There was a mound in the middle that you can stand on, and you can see a 365-degree view of the park. So, if you have multiple kids, they can scatter and go play on their favorite toy, and you can see all of them from the same place, which was amazing. So, when we built our park, we should think about doing something similar there. And then also to see council members jump on cardboard, pieces of cardboard and slide down the turf hill that this mound is on was pretty funny too. They just started doing it on their own. They just picked up these cardboards and slid down. So, that was a lot of fun. And then you'll all be jealous that you missed an epic two and a half hour plus business meeting at the end of the second day. There were about 14 statements of policy that were proposed. Most of them were voted down by, by the group. So, it was an interesting time. Our, our CEO of AWC, who is generally very jovial and laid back, exerted her executive authority and presence, which was great, to keep that business meeting moving at the end. So, it was kind of cool to see that. And I think family members would be proud of that. So, good, it was a good event, a lot of interesting learnings, and looking forward to next year. It will be in Kennewick, and it will be this week, so last weekend, in June instead of the third week in June. So, that's all I got.
Councilwoman Broldirks.
I may not be jealous about that business meeting, but I am jealous that I didn't get to go. I do have, I have updates from the National League of Cities Summer Leadership Conference. So, the week before AWC, I was in Rancho Cordova, California, at meeting with the Human Development Committee, and so I have updates on that. I was not able to attend AWC, so I do not have anything to add. But, and I also have a couple of other committee updates as well. So, I am sorry. I will try to keep this brief. So, at, in Rancho Cordova, the Human Development Committee met, and we were able to get a tour of a youth center. I featured it in my newsletter that I sent out to the community this week. It was a partnership between the city, the Boys and Girls Club, and something called the Police Activities League, which their, their police department runs, where officers run youth programs for low-income youth, like Little League, martial arts, and leadership and programs. And that is a way to extend youth center programming, but also to build trust between law enforcement officers and the public. Really cool to learn about it. We were able to conduct our, our business meeting there, and we reviewed several resolutions that would go to, go to Congress, showing support from National League of Cities on those topics. Really enjoyable meetings. The next day, we were able to meet with both the Human Development Committee, the Public Safety Committee, as well as the Economic Development Committee, and we were able to hear about Rancho Cordova's Crisis Responder Program, kind of like our racer. They have a, they have their own type of program that is run in partnership with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office. And we also were able to hear that the city had funded homeless veteran housing, including investing $51 million to serve approximately 4,000 individuals with 100 units of permanent supportive housing, 46 transitional housing beds. And it was like, I didn't get a tour of that one. It was really cool to go around the city and see all of the infrastructure that they have built there. Rancho Cordova is actually a relatively new city. Like, I grew up 30 miles away from there, and it wasn't the city when I was a kid. So, they've incorporated in my lifetime. And, and so it was just really, really cool to see kind of how they've grown, how they've invested their funds, their, their, their values as a community. One evening, we also were able to, we got an invitation to a farm that was operated by a Michelin Star restaurant tour in the area, and we got some really good food and good entertainment from the Rancho Cordova Concert Band. And we were able to just enjoy watching the sunset over something like 4,000 acres. It was beautiful. I highly recommend to my council colleagues to get involved in National League of Cities, not just because you get to eat Michelin Star food, but also because it's really good community and connections with, with council members from across the country. Next up, Eastside Human Services Forum. I have an update from them. Today, they held an event at Bellevue College in partnership with Eastside Pathways called Systems of Oppression and Human Services and Their Unintended Consequences. I was not able to attend that. It is, it actually ran until 5 o'clock this evening. And so, I'm hoping to be able to share an update on that at a future meeting. Eastside Transportation Partnership celebrated a 300,000 rider day on Metro earlier this month, which is pretty amazing because this is, this, there's a lot of new infrastructure that was built, especially with the, the light rail through, through Bellevue and Redmond. So, they gave us an update on kind of how, how public safety works in the area, how they're working with crisis response teams. And they're also trying to do partnerships with behavioral health specialists and ambassadors, Metro Police and Transit Security, to make sure that everybody who rides is safe, and also that people who may be having behavioral health challenges are able to get support and care to them quickly. So, that's, one more is the Waste Management Advisory Committee. They're, they sent out a letter on rate changes. It's a final draft that was put together by the committee, and I can forward that to council so that you all can look at that. And then, lastly, I just want to say that it is still Pride Month in, in America. And coming up, before we meet again, is the Seattle Pride Parade. It's their 50th anniversary of the, of the parade this year, and I'm going to be out there with at least one member of my family, and I hope that our community can go out and celebrate pride together. So, thank you.
Councilmember Dodd.
Thank you. I actually had a question for my fellows who did go to AWC. I had noticed this was the first year they were providing childcare, and it didn't work out for me because school wasn't actually out here yet. And I'm a cool mom, but I'm not that cool. He had to go to school. So, did you hear anything about that and how it went, and any updates on that front?
I didn't hear any childcare, but there were council members there who brought their families this time. Like, Ryan McCurvin brought his family, and, but they were entertaining themselves. I don't think he ever, do you recall him having the kids in childcare?
I don't. I, I walked around the conference area and I didn't see any signs for it, so I'm not sure if they had like a request upfront to see if anybody was interested and didn't have it, because there was no request. But, yeah, I didn't, I didn't see anything that was like visually present there.
Okay, I was just curious. I can, I can ask AWC, but I was curious how that went because that is a very nice idea. I think our council is a little unique in having like probably five of us with kids who could use childcare. And I'm, if it aligns better with the school year next year, I can see myself using that, depending on how I went this year. So, thank you.
All right. Next up is projected agenda discussion. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss? I'm going to move on now. Next up is the consent agenda. I would love to entertain a motion. Councilmember Dodd.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Dodd and a second from Councilmember Aldirks to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none? City Clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no. I want to call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Aldirks?
Yes.
Councilmember Curd?
Yes.
Councilmember Manki?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cobra?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes 7-0.
Thank you, City Clerk. All right, next up, we have a public hearing to review and consider adoption of the 2025-2030 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program by resolution. If anybody's watching, you'll probably remember this from last week, two weeks ago?
June 4th, I had to look.
Okay, yeah. Not, not very long ago. And I'm going to kick it over to the city manager to take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor. And you did mention, just a moment ago, about the council being interested in pedestrian safety. So, as I introduced the public hearing tonight, as you mentioned, all of this information should be fresh and familiar to both the council and to the community who were following, as we did just have the study session. But we, in our presentation, we typically keep things pretty, pretty much the same and shorter from the study session, since you just heard it. But there is some information in here tonight, particularly based in response to a request from the council to have a project added titled Sammamish River Pedestrian Bike Bridge. So, you'll hear a little bit more about that tonight. I just wanted to note that again. So, this will be to confirm what we heard, and then we'll have the opportunity to hear from the community if anyone is interested in speaking to this. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron Lenhart and Steve Marikawa from Public Works. It looks like Steve won the coin toss.
Good evening, everyone. So, two weeks ago, we did talk about the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. So, this is the public hearing to get any public input. If appropriate, we'd want to consider adoption of the resolution for the six-year tip. You've seen most of this slide. I'm going to go through it fairly quickly. There's a couple of things I would point out. So, we did talk to, two weeks ago, kind of went through what the tip is, what deletions and adds we put on the project.
Hey, Steve.
Yep.
I'm sorry, but I did not open the public hearing. So, I am now going to open the public hearing. Was saying it was a public hearing good enough?
Thank you for officially opening.
Okay.
Thought we were conversing.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry about that.
It is currently the staff portion, but it's okay.
Okay, perfect. Assist to Rami on that one.
So, this six-year tip pretty much looks like what we, the capital facility plan that was adopted in last year, and it has a little bit of changes based on things like completion of projects, grant opportunities, and once in a while, council requests as well. And then, you know, before the CFP, we also adopted the previous year's six-year tip, and it kind of goes in this two-year cycle. So, the tip essentially is a planning document. It is a subset of the capital facilities plan. It's kind of required by the state every year, and it's often needed for grant eligibility, especially for state grants. The six-year tip really is that list that you see in your packet, the six-year project list. We put a map in there just for locating projects that have locations and project descriptions to help identify what the project scopes are. There is also a transportation needs list in there, but that really is not part of the six-year tip. It's our way of keeping track of projects that are in our plans that aren't in the six-year funding cycle, but we need to remember, we need to get to those projects at some point. So, the tip and the capital facility plan, they're really kind of the same thing. The CFP is larger in the sense that it captures all types of capital facility projects like utilities, facilities, and parks. The six-year tip is just the transportation part of it, so it really should look identical. And we do use the CFP process, the public process, the council process to basically go through and select our projects. The one difference, if you're really paying attention, we have a cleanup, downtown cleanup, and we had to put it under something. So, we put it under transportation for want of anything else, but it will not appear in the six-year TIP because it's not really a transportation project. Wrong way. Okay, so this is the cycle. And again, it's kind of a two-year cycle because we've adopted a two-year budget and a two-year capital facility plan updated every two years. So, in 2022, we, in March, we adopted a six-year tip because it's due by July. We started the CFP process that year, finished it in the fall and adopted that plan. And then the following year, the six-year tip pretty much matches the capital facility plan transportation section. And then this year, we start all over again. Before July, we have to submit our six-year tip because it's requirement, and we're also going through our capital facility plan update as we speak, and it will be adopted in the fall along with the budget. Then we start all over again. So, as I told you before, there are a few projects that were deleted because there will be, they're ongoing this year, and they'll be finished by the end of this year. That's not working. Nope, it did. Sorry. Looking at two screens. And then, what I did tell you is we're deleting these four safety programs, but we're combining them into one large safety program with smaller components, again, to give us more flexibility. Some years, there might be benefit and grants for a particular type of projects. The next year, it might be something else, and this will give us more flexibility. So, there were some projects added, the safety program, which again is just those five smaller safety programs in one. We did get, as the city manager mentioned, 100% funding for some sound transit access projects. And because of that, we put that on the six-year tip, and it will be on the CFP that you guys see in the future. We thought we'd have an opportunity for 100-second everything shared use path for a grant, and we had, you guys had set aside bike money to do projects. So, we're using some of that seed money as match money in that grant application, and it's looking actually pretty promising in terms of getting that grant. We added a couple overlay projects for far in the future, not in the next few years, but we try to look ahead. And again, these are the projects that'll probably go for grant applications some years down the road. So, the one project we did talk about two weeks ago was the Sammamish River Pedestrian Bike Bridge project. And what I think their request was, was to include it. It is a high-ranking bike project in itself, and obviously there's pedestrian needs along that corridor as well. Excuse me. So, what I wanted to do is describe it a little bit. What we're doing is putting some seed money aside to get us through a kind of a conceptual phase. A conceptual phase would be needed here because it's a bridge. And typically, where you locate the bridge, the size of the bridge, and they call it the type of the bridge, is very important. So, in this particular instance, I don't know if this will work. Yep. So, this is the East Riverside Drive here. So, this bridge would likely be located somewhere between the edge of the manufactured home park here and Brickyard. And this is where the current railroad bed, which the trail would use, lies. We actually walked the trail to make sure it looked okay, and the grades kind of worked. walked the trail to make sure it looked okay, and the grades kind of work out. So it really would matter where the bridge would best be located, and that's part of the study. It's also the size and the location, the type, which all combine into the cost, and that's what you kind of need to start going after grants for funding. What we did notice, though, even if you didn't go out there, on the north side, you have the King County Regional Trail. But on the south side, you have no pedestrian or bike facility. So it didn't seem to make sense to drop a bridge that you can't really get to safely. So what we did was, we included as part of this scope, again, I can't see my, sorry, there. What we did was included a portion of the East Riverside Drive Trail, starting from a driveway from the manufactured home, the westernmost, all the way to Brickyard Road. So that would provide access essentially to the bridge itself. One question did come up is if we did put the bridge there, would you be able to access the future transit connection point? And really, you can't directly like walk across here because there won't be a ped crossing on 522. You would essentially have to cross here, get to the undercrossing of the Uda Botho Cascadia College, and then there will be a path here that you can walk or bike along. So it's not, if you're coming further west, sorry, if you're coming from the west, it's pretty direct. But if you're coming from the east, you really have to kind of backtrack and go back again. So that's the one project that we did add. And we're using bike program money as the seed money for that. There's one other small thing that we missed somehow in the previous projects at the 527 I-4 or 5 interchange. Some of the crossings, all of the crossings get a little interesting. One of the sound transit projects that is funded is to put safety flashing beacons here for the crossing here, which helps. But that still leaves at least three other crossings that haven't been addressed yet. So we wanted to leave this on the transportation needs list. It's not in the six-year tip, but it's something we don't want to forget. And then the last thing we went through is the six-year tip also doesn't just have projects, it has programs, ongoing programs, and this is a list of our ongoing yearly annual programs. So assuming we adopt tonight, staff would submit the six-year tip to Washington State Department of Transportation. Typically, it's due by July 1st of each year. And that's pretty much it for my presentation.
And the one thing I'll add before we open the public hearing and see if there's anyone who wants to comment, or maybe we are open, is just to note for council, while typically we have separated out action from the public hearings, because of the deadline of July 1st, we have teed this up for potential adoption tonight. So if council is ready to adopt, you may do so. Following hearing from the public, of course.
Councilmember Zornz?
Yeah, thank you for all the hard work here. I just, so many pieces of, moving pieces of Bothell to keep track of. I really appreciate you looking at all the nooks and crannies that need attention. Your discussion of the new bridge along 522, and I was thinking about previous requests of trying to get a bridge so that people could access the northeast kind of quadrant of the interchange, you know, where the new Seattle Times apartment buildings are going, to get over to the, to the Samamish River side. But I'm thinking that they're gonna have to go down Beardsley in order to get to the kind of loop around on 190, 195th Beardsley Boulevard to drop down to get to the transit hub, coming from that northeast corner, right? If you were cycling.
So, so actually, if I can see my pointer, yeah. So let's just say, let's just say the bridge was here. So if you're coming, if you're coming from Brickyard Road, we go here, we're gonna build part of the trail, working with King County. You cross the bridge here to the regional trail, Samamish River. You go over here and you go the underpass as you go up north toward Uda Botho and Cascadia College. Halfway through the underpass, Sound Transit is gonna be building, washed out for Sound Transit, it's gonna be building a trail essentially that follows this alignment here and gets you to this hub.
Okay, so if you continue the trajectory of the mouse that you had there and keep going to your top right-hand corner, the folks that live, yeah, on that other side, that quadrant, the northeast quadrant, if it's, are my points on the compass right?
Right.
They're gonna have to go north, then west, and then drop down south to get into this interchange, aren't they? Or they're going to have to go in towards Woodenville?
I would imagine if they're on a bike or walking, it's a long walk, but they would follow the North Creek Trail to the same underpass and then get to that corridor.
Which on a bike is totally doable.
Yep. So one other thing that we looked at, but again, it's just a matter of how much you, you can spend for the convenience, is what would it take? Because there is actually, and I'm losing my mouse again, sorry. So there are actually, in the future, there will be a crossing here because if you can think about it, when the express toll lane drops down to 522, to get on the northbound bus, you have to cross this way.
Okay.
So there will be a cross on that particular leg of the express toll lane access. So you think about it, if you could somehow get past this ramp across the wetlands through Home Depot, you could create a trail there. Yes. But I think the difficult part is probably the wetlands and that particular on-ramp is not elevated. It's actually, I think, on the surface. So that becomes very, very pricey.
Yeah. I do appreciate the, the new bike corridor that you put on East Riverside Drive. I've just, you know, look at projects like this and go, it's baby steps, but it's big baby steps for.
So Aaron's also reminded me, in the farther future, part of the I-4 or I-5 master plan is reworking the 195th interchange.
Okay, okay.
So that's still an opportunity for Bothell to advocate for BRT or moving the BRT stop at that point.
That's true.
Because that would better service the campus as well as our business park.
And the campus is very tied in and invested in that 195th, aren't they? At least that my memory was that they were.
With the crossing, yes, I-4 or I-5.
Okay, okay. The only other, I had a mild panic attack when I saw the eliminating, the eliminating of the Bothell or the neighborhood traffic calming. But you said that's going to be all rolled up into a safety program? And where, where's that safety program going to be tucked away?
It's, it's, it's a yearly program. It has the same amount of funds that those four or five smaller safety programs had combined. So it's the same thing. It's just that each of those programs is a subset of the safety program.
Perfect, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Menke?
Thank you, mayor. Just one quick question for me. The rail corridor piece there and right in the center, does that require the same approval from King County that the rest of the trail would? Okay. Would we, would we seek approval for the whole thing or just for that specific portion? And then once we have that, go back and say, you know, hey, we've got this part built. It makes sense to finish it. You should approve the rest of it.
The whole, the whole thing is actually King County. There's two pieces, kind of interesting, I don't know. But this piece is in the city of Bothell, but is owned by King County. This piece that you see in white is actually King County. So that's a kind of a remnant that's not in the city of Bothell, and that's where the trail is. So either way, we have to work with them. Even with the bridge, the landing on the north side lands on the King County trail. We don't own the trail, King County does. So we will have to work with them too. I think one of the good things is, I think the King County council made some decisions about trails recently, and I think that may help us and open the doors for discussions. Also, you know, they've been heavily invested in trying to work on East Rail, East Trail, and that's taken a lot of their time, but seems like there's some opportunity here. So I think hopefully this fall, we'll try to start discussions and see where it goes.
Excellent, thank you. All right, thank you guys very much. We just saw this a few weeks ago, so I don't think we're super chatty about it. Thank you for the update on the bridge. We really appreciate it. Wait, what? Oh, yes. And we have to see if there's any public comment because this is a public hearing. Thank you, everybody.
We did not have anybody sign up to speak to the public hearing tonight. However, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to do so, please step to this podium. And if you're in the virtual audience, use the raise hand function, and you will have three minutes.
All right, thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yes?
Eileen Kiefer, city attorney. This is your friendly reminder just to close the public hearing, please.
I will now close the public hearing. Thank you very much. All right. It is eight o'clock. Oh, we need a motion. That's right, geez.
We're throwing variables.
I am super glad that y'all are here tonight, like, and this isn't all on me. So thanks, everybody. I would love to accept a motion. Councilmember Menke?
I would move that we adopt a resolution approving the 2025 through 2030 six-year TIP as amended.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from councilmember Menke and a second from councilmember Dodd. And I still remember their names, so I'm doing something right tonight. City clerk?
Thank you. Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurd?
Yes.
Councilmember Menke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right. Is there anything I've ever, okay, I think I'm good. I can move on. We are gonna take a break right now. It is 8:01. We have a couple study sessions left. We'll recondean down there at 8:20. All right, welcome back. I feel like I'm in a little chair. I feel like I might have to move this thing up after I've been talking. You all really needed to know that, I know. We have two study sessions tonight. The first one is proposed BMC title 1709 Updates Residential Single Lot Frontage Improvements. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. And council, you'll recall, this was a topic that was initiated by council as a future council projected item. And staff, fortunately, it was something that they were also working on. So we're excited to bring back some, some updates. Since we've talked, staff has finished up some work and then also had multiple touches with the planning commission, which we had here a little bit about tonight. And ultimately, tonight's study session is designed not to approve anything, but to hear a little bit about where things are at and then get a reaction of, yeah, this was something that council initiated. So after you hear more about it, is this something you want to see continue in terms of coming back in the form of an ordinance to approve? Or did you get your questions answered and we keep the code as is or other options? So with that, I'm gonna turn things back over to staff, and I'm gonna introduce Boyd Benson to walk us through what we've learned.
Thank you, city manager. Good evening, council and mayor. Tonight, we'll be discussing frontage requirements for single lot residential development. We have Public Works Director Lenhart here and also Director Greenspan from Community Development. And this has been a collaborative effort between departments, development services, legal interaction, and the rest. So we're pretty excited to bring this forward. We're presenting information tonight. There is no requested action. We do hope to obtain feedback from you this evening. So just a bit of history, we did update our municipal code back in 2021, and that was to more clearly define requirements for single lot residential development. And we had some flexibility in there and the rest, and we'll get into that in a bit. With the advent of the ADU and middle housing update legislation in 2023, what we found based on what we had seen and also comment and discussion with council is that our existing municipal code may not appropriately address those type of housing units. So what we did is we spoke with you folks. We added it to the upcoming agenda. We spoke to Planning Commission in May and June. They provided draft funding clues recommendations. And today, we're here to discuss the proposed municipal code policy updates and obtained feedback. Next steps for this, should council wish to consider, would be bringing you with us back for a public hearing to get community feedback, and then at one point, bringing forward for adoption. So what's the issue? Frontage and utility requirements for residential single lot development. We're gonna make this very clear. This is not what you see with normal large commercial or subdivision developments. Why are we here? The new ADU and middle housing requirements, ADU requirements specifically prohibit cities requiring frontage. So that's something we need to address. And middle housing, there's a push for affordability. We'd like to accommodate that. We'd also like to be part of the solution, get our processes and procedures in place, so it's very clear when folks come in. We're asking you to consider our policy, get feedback, and if council wishes, go to public hearing and consideration adoption. So one of the questions council actually was brought forward by a community member is, is why isn't the city doing all the work to do improvements in the city? And what we really wanted to make clear is there are city improvements that are part of our CFP, and there's development improvements. And this has worked really well in the past because typically we'd see large city projects that are system-wide, that are typically funded by facility charges, impact fees, and we take care of growth that way. And then we see large developments that it's very simple to, to show that you take one large lot and now you have 40 homes, they're generating many trips and they're impacting the sewer and the water and the storm infrastructure. So it's very simple. So once again, city improvements are system-wide. They're in the CFP. They're not intended to take care of frontage and individual lots that are developing. Large developments typically took care of that, and proportionality wasn't even a consideration. It's like, look, you're impacting the system, you're generating trips, take care of business, and pay your facility charges and impact fees to fund system-wide improvements. Single lot residential development, currently with ADUs and middle housing, it does not fit well into that model. And so I've, there's a lot of words up here, but once again, it's House Bill 1337 for ADUs. And I already mentioned a lot of this, sorry, but it prohibits frontage improvements. And then middle housing, it, this is a tough one because it's, it's not well-developed. We're not sure what we're going to see. So when this was first envisioned and how this was conveyed is it's residential buildings with multiple units. Well, that can be a home that's partitioned into two, right? Like a duplex. It could be demolishing a home and putting up four townhomes, which may not quite look residential in scale, but it really is, it's that kind of, I'm not gonna say it's a gray area, but it's falling between, this is definitely impacting all these systems and this isn't. And so that's what we're here to discuss. So currently, under municipal code and state law, you can do the duplex, two dwelling units on any residential lot within the city, the fourplexes as well. If you're within the quarter mile, you're just good to go. And if you're outside of that, you have to do one affordable unit. What I'd really like to make clear is with House Bill 1110, there's also subdivision language in there to achieve the density envisioned in the House Bill. And that even takes one step further. So if you consider you have a home and you split it in two and there's two families living in it, that's fine. But when you subdivide that, how do you actually subdivide it in two units? Do you install a firewall? Do you have separate water services and the rest? So these are the questions staff was already working on before this was brought to council's attention. And one that's near and dear to me is the utilities. You take a single-family residential home and you split it in two, do you split all the plumbing? Do you add a new water meter? Do you add new sewer service and sewer billing? And I'll tell you right now, if it's fee simple and it's subdivided, most people would like to be in control of their own destiny with respect to utility bills. They wouldn't be wanting their neighbor that has no interest in their property to be paying those bills. And it just doesn't work that way. So we'll talk about that briefly as well. So to me, this is kind of the crux to the issue. I'm gonna walk you through this. I'm trying to make this as brief as possible, but the key that we looked at, because we gave this a lot of thought, proportionality is a tough one to define when you look at improvements required. But the way we look at this, which I think is really good, is if infrastructure was designed for a certain use and you do that use, you're good. Standards may change over time, but you can do that. Once you start intensifying the use over what was envisioned, that's when we should start looking at improvements. So this one is a great one. This is the first one, the 1936 Ross Road 185th. It was an apple orchard, timber. It came into the city and it was annexed in 1955. And it's, what you'd seen is what was developed at the time. It was single lot development. And at that time, they needed roads and ditches. That's great. And old, older substandard, in our opinion now, asbestos cement water may, and sewer that may leak and the rest. So what we're trying to get to now is, okay, if someone tears a home down there and puts a home back, has it really changed the intensity of the land use? And the answer, in our opinion, is no. So is it right to make them bring everything up to current code? They may want to. They may want all those amenities, but it was planned for a home with these amenities. You take the home out and replace it, it's, it's kind of hard to justify making them bring everything up to standard. At least, that's the approach we're taking with residential single lot subdivision. Once you go beyond that and we, we show the 91 apartments, the Ross Road apartments, it's very simple. very simple. You've taken four lots that were, actually, it's five, sorry, that were intended for single-family residential, five homes, and now you've put 91 apartments. So, for this development, they rebuilt the road, they replaced the water, they fixed the sewer, and they did storm. So, it's really simple. And then, once again, the single lot dwelling units lie in between. But what we're really fixating on is now, if a lot was developed for one home, you're good. If you go beyond that, then we start looking at improvements. So, what is that threshold? Is that two homes, or three homes, or four homes? So, under current code, and this is the work we did in 2021, if you increase the value over 50%, so you have a half million dollar home and it's now a million dollar home, the city can require frontage improvements. Great, you've increased the value. And this is how it was in 2021. I'm not saying this is how we're currently looking at it. And if you're below that, well, we'll ask for minimum improvements, because everyone should have pedestrian access to our homes. It's actually required. It may not be a concrete sidewalk with a landscape strip, but it's something. So, that's what we had in the past. And then, once again, we're just kind of being, remaining, we're subdivisions and large multifamily site plan review and commercial, it's just typically those just trigger improvements. So, what we did is, we started looking at other municipalities. How are they dealing with this? And I'll say right now, I think Bothell's kind of ahead of the curve on this, which is good. So, we summarized the Bothell Current and the 50%. Bellevue just says, no frontage improvements for any single-family dwelling unit. Okay. Kirkland has an equation that, kind of like our 50%, if the value increases by so much, you do frontage. Redmond and Woodinville were ahead of us with respect to ADUs, and they follow what's required by House Bill 1337, is you're exempt from improvements, and that's what's being proposed by staff. But then, when you look at adding dwelling units or splitting dwelling units, they have something similar. We really keyed into Redmond, because they looked at gross floor area, the gross area of the home. Because taking a 2,000 square foot home and adding another 2,000 square feet, that's very easy to calculate. A 2,000 square foot home that was built in 1950 may have a market value of $60,000, a 2,000... I'm just saying, if you look at the tax rules, a 2,000 home, square foot home built in 2021 may have a half million value. So, is it fair to base it on those values? Because why should an older home basically have to install improvements sooner, because they're exceeding those thresholds? So, what we got to is, okay, this is what we're proposing. Everything subdivision, large-scale multifamily, commercial, you do full frontage. If they can come up with documentation demonstrating why they shouldn't, we already have those provisions in place, they can take care of business. ADUs, you're exempt from frontage. What we did add is dividing an existing dwelling unit. If you're underneath certain thresholds, you're also exempt from frontage, and this is to promote affordability. And also, because in staff's opinion, and we'll talk about this in a second, there's a difference between going from one home to a home and an ADU, two dwelling units, which per House Bill 1337, we can't require frontage, and then you can also do a dwelling unit, dwelling unit, and we're saying if they're small enough, it's very similar, so no frontage, than if you go to two, three, and more. And so, that's kind of where we're at. And right now, what we're saying is, as a staff recommendation, and it was brought forward to Planning Commission, and they supported this approach, if you are adding dwelling units, if you're less than 100% of the gross floor area of the parent dwelling unit, you have a 2,000 square foot home and you're adding something less than 2,000, you're exempt. Because that's very similar to having a home and adding an accessory dwelling unit. If you're more than 100%, or you're adding, you have a total more than two dwelling units, so you go to three, then we're saying you install frontage. Now, this is a little different than what we first brought to Planning Commission. We talked about, should there be caps on the frontage costs and the rest? And what we got to, and you'll see in the proposed code, that's also very hard for equity, because some lots have long frontages and some have short. And we'll have some examples in a second. So, what we basically did is, on that, even if you're over 100% increasing gross floor area, or more than two, you can still go through the process to demonstrate to the city that your impacts are small enough where certain improvements may not be warranted. Okay? I know I'm talking a lot, but this, I'm trying to set the stage. So, examples. This is staff proposed. For ADUs, frontage is not required, and that's 1337. Council heard from a community member earlier in the year, and this was good, because it brought up some really hard questions, where we're kind of working on, but we weren't. This community member had a 900 square foot existing dwelling unit, and what they proposed is to build a brand-new 2,400 square foot home and then reclassify that existing as a dwelling unit. And what was brought to staff is, well, I'm building an ADU, why are you requiring frontage? And at the time, it's, well, because you're exceeding all our code. You have a 1,000-foot home and now you're building a 2,400 square foot home, and you're reclassifying that. But if you think about the net effect, it still is one home and one ADU. And so, what we're looking at now is, their neighbor could have a much larger home. They already could have a 2,400 square foot home, and they could add an 1,000 square foot ADU. It's the same net impact. And so, what we're saying is, hey, great, don't require frontage. So, if you have an existing dwelling unit and you add a new ADU, you're exempt from House Bill 1337. If you have an existing dwelling unit and you reclassify as an ADU and build another home, it's the same net impact. So, we're saying you're exempt for frontage. And that's staff's recommendation, and we think it's pretty consistent with other cities. Planning Commission was pretty supportive of it, and we think it helps, it's in line with House Bill 1337 proposes, and we think it helps make things clear and promote affordability. So, that's thing one. Then we get to division. Now, when I think middle housing, I actually think of, I mean, oh, it's a duplex, but this is the image I think of. It's either a home that's kind of residential scale, and it's existing home, and you split it in two. To me, that's middle housing. So, if you have an existing dwelling unit and you split it in two, or you replace it with a new dwelling unit, and so you have two, but you're less than 100% gross floor area, we're saying, that's not much different than a home and an ADU, you're exempt from frontage. And we believe that, just based on Council input, that we'd have support for this. One, it's very clear, it's very transparent. Yeah, knock yourself out. Put a wall in, no frontage. Demolish a home and build a home that's less than 200% of what was there, then you're exempt from frontage. And that's that. And we'll get to utilities at the very end. Now, this is where it gets tough. And this is where we hope, I think we got there with Planning Commission, well, we did, it was in the findings, recommendations, conclusions, but we hope Council sees the same thing. When I look at this image, I see, in the middle, I see a single-family dwelling unit, a small cottage. Now, if that was split in two, or they added an ADU or something else, maybe frontage isn't required. But what we're seeing is, and this isn't middle housing, this is a subdivision, we're seeing demolish, that type of unit demolished, and then large townhomes being built. These have garages, they have all the utilities, they have the rest, and to us, these are generating vehicle trips. These are impacting utilities. They're doing all these things. So, in this case, what we're saying is, okay, you're more than two, and you're more than 100%, you'll be doing frontage improvements. And in staff's opinion, this is equitable. I mean, this, these really don't look the same. They make sure that development addresses its impacts, and once again, the city wouldn't come in after the fact and put in sidewalks on something like this. So, this is what we're proposing. And once again, if this, these are much smaller, or something else, you had an existing dwelling unit and you cut it into four, you could easily demonstrate, we haven't increased our area, there's no more rooms, there's this and that, we don't think there's frontage. So, those are, those are the frontage, and I have one slide with utilities I'd like to share before questions, if that's... So, utilities. We had already, and what we like to relate this to is a manufactured home. Our standards require that if you redevelop, you bring utilities up to current standards. And we found out early, that didn't work with manufactured homes, because they're not really increasing the burden, these things change out a lot. So, we've relaxed that standard. So, what we got to on this is that for single lot utility improvements, and this is where it's tough. If you're using these allowances for either ADUs or middle housing to get this density, what staff's recommending, no sewer main, water main improvements. And that's a very, it's a tough recommendation, but if you think about it in the sense of this subdivision, even the larger townhomes, that's a very short section of water main. It's not super efficient to jump. We can still, and we had someone else make comment to Council, where there is concrete sewer that's in bad shape, and the city said, you know, cure and place pipe, which is much cheaper. So, we can still do things like that. But what we're recommending is, we relax the standards for main improvements for middle housing or single lot redevelopment, partially because it isn't efficient to have these small sections of water main that pop out, and they're good and they're bad. We can add these to our CFP and take care of them, and it just doesn't make a lot of sense. But with that, and we already have this in the code, is each of these units, if there's a potential for this to subdivide, or be a condominium that's subdividable, we're recommend... Well, we already have it in our standards, it gets its own water and sewer service. And this is what we brought to Council last year to try to limit this impact for affordability. We brought the small dwelling unit facility charge. So, when these things started to happen, there was a less of a burden with respect to cost. So, we're ahead of the game on that. So, we're still recommending that. If you had stacked units, they could never be fee simple, right? Only condominium? It makes sense to have one meter, there's a condo association. But any chance, like the one on the left, or the one on the right, on the right, on the left-hand side, that those subdivide, they should have their own meter, they should have their own sewer service, they should be responsible for their own bills, which is great. So, we plan, or we propose to continue down that path. Now, dwelling units on different floors, it's just like an apartment building, which is great, or a condominium with different owners. It doesn't make, they can actually own their space, but will they ever have their own water meter? It doesn't really work that way. There'll always be a condominium association. So, we said, that's okay. You can't subdivide it. People should understand that these type of uses, it could be condominiumized, but they're not sold fee simple to land, and so they can be a shared meter. So, that's kind of where we're at. Aaron, can you think of any? We have a conclusion slide. Okay. And we can go back. So, right now, we're seeking input from Council, and then depending on input, we'd like to, we actually have already tentatively scheduled a public hearing for July 9th to get comment, and that can be moved. Council could say, no, do it later, and the rest, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, and then, if Council chooses to proceed, complete the public hearing. We do have to send this, we are already in the CEPA process, which is good. Even with the language we have proposed now, it can be tweaked and we're okay. But we do have to send the final language to Department of Commerce, that's a 60-day review. So, if we had positive feedback from Council, we could actually submit that to Commerce and start that clock, so that if Council chose to proceed, we could bring this back after recess.
Boyd, it's a land rush. Before we open it up for Council questions, I was hoping you could speak on one last thing. You mentioned some of the Planning Commission feedback on a couple of the first scenarios. We didn't hear it about the utilities, and we didn't hear it about the four units. Can you share a little bit more about what you heard, themes you heard from the Planning Commission that might help the Council with their thought process?
Yes, thank you. That's good. So, for utilities, and we have a Planning Commissioner here, I don't, I'm hoping they don't disagree at this point. I think we had understanding that right now, it is difficult to just do short sections of the main, it doesn't always make sense, but ensuring that they each have a service, and if it's a substandard service, they're already required to bring it up to snuff, up to current standards. Because we don't want someone to have an old service that leaks, or isn't the right material for potable water. So, we're retaining that, so that's good. The one I didn't mention, City Manager, is the whole underground requirement. We're looking at that as well, and as part of this, undergrounding of overhead utilities along the frontage would not be required, and it's actually going to make things a lot more certain for this type of development, because it is really hard to drop lines over a 50-foot frontage, and it's not very cost-effective. But with that said, the lines to the structures would still be undergrounded from the right of way. So, that's the utilities. For the four units, we didn't have a lot of question on that. They were, like I said, they were keen on having some type of cap or threshold, but once again, it's really tough to do. And I'm just going to say it again, if someone has a lot that has 1,000 feet of frontage, and we set a threshold of, okay, you know, we're going to make it 50% of your valued project, nothing's going to be installed. Right? And so, there's other methods for folks to come in and say, this isn't reasonable, we want to do something else, we want to protect wetlands. There's, they have, we have ways to address that, as opposed to something that's 50 feet, and it just makes sense. So, did I kind of answer your question? Okay.
Time for comment question? I think you answered one of my, the only question I had was that if something, if a utility is substandard, you will require them to get that so it can support the changes that are happening on the property?
So, this is a, once again, remember, I do utilities, and utilities near and dear to my heart, but right now, for single lot residential redevelopment, we're saying no improvements to substandard mains.
No improvements to substandard mains? No, well, I'm talking about like, from the main to the house.
Yes, service lines, yes.
The service lines you would require.
Yeah, and we already, even for manufactured homes. And part of that is, people deserve to have good service lines.
Right.
And that's the time to do it. I mean, we have manufactured home communities where the service lines split, and there's substandard material that can't take pressures and the rest. And so, when that happens, so would be the same thing.
Okay, that was my, that was my question.
Cool, thank you.
It looks very, very well thought out, and my only concern was, what if, you know, the system of hooking up the units is needing help? So, you got it covered. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. For projects in process, because as you mentioned, we've heard from people who are kind of in the thick of it, will this apply to them? Do they have to do anything? Like, I know, everybody can laugh at me, because I'm going to talk about it, and I'm, this is not my area, but like, there's like vesting, where if you have your permit at a certain time, like, you're subject to those rules. Like, will this just apply to those projects in flight, or would they have to kind of redo part of their application to benefit from this if it passes?
So, good news on that. We are seeing ADUs come in, but what we presented to Council in April after discussing it with legal is, House Bill 1337 trumps us. So, the director has the ability for that interpretation. So, for ADUs, we're not requiring frontage at this time, because we can't violate, you know, state statute.
I appreciate that we're not violating state statute. That's very well done.
And can I just add one thing on this?
Yeah.
Councilmember Orns brought up a good thing. If a property is without sewer and water, there will be extension requirements, and that's one that's going to be tough, and we let people know that, because we don't allow people to drill wells, water wells in the city of Bothell, it's too expensive anyway. So, there could be sites where there is not existing sewer or water main, those will have to be extended, and unfortunately, that's just what has to happen. We have some provisions for onsite sanitary drain fields, but it's really hard to get that done, so. I just want to make it clear, because I think I forgot about that, and when you asked about utilities, CM, I forgot to mention that.
I personally think that's great. My whole road is excited, because someone around the corner is putting in sewer, and it will go past our house. And 30 years in Snohomish County, Bothell, it's finally happening, so.
I really appreciate this presentation, especially, what is it, Slide 10, where you show the comparisons with the other cities. I think it's really useful to see what other people who have thought through the same things have come up with. And I really like your recommendation. It makes a lot of sense. It makes a lot of sense. I think you, I think you explained it really well. You know, visuals are always nice, because then we can better understand what you're, what you're describing. And yeah, I really appreciate the thought that's gone into this, and I think you explained it pretty clearly. So thank you.
I'll echo, thank you for the visual. There was one on there, I think it was Planning Commission Recommendation A, where they turned the main house into an ADU, and they built a larger house in the back. And I was thinking, wait a minute, that's a very sneaky way to do it. But when you talk about the square footage, and, you know, another single-family lot having the same square footage that was built later, much larger, that makes complete sense, and I have, I have no concerns about that at all. The, the one question I do have is around the utility piece and the frontage improvements. Makes total sense as well, that you wouldn't cut up a small piece of pipe to modernize it when the rest of the pipe is substandard. Is there though, a middle ground where someone could pay a portion of it for their section into a, a utility fund, so that the burden of the full replacement is not on the entire system users? Maybe 50% or, or lower for that section of pipe, rather than just saying, no improvements at all, or, you know, put in all the money to make all the improvements?
It's, it's a really good question. I haven't seen that be successful, because it's hard to, it's a really good question, so we'll give that some thought.
Okay. I don't, I don't know what the right, you know, calculation would be, like, the square footage of the frontage, or not square footage, but the, the length of the frontage, and the cost of the pipe of the section, and, you know, 25%, 50%, whatever it may be. But I just thought, that question popped into my mind as you were presenting, and I don't know if that's the right answer, but curiosity.
Yeah. And just to, if it's okay, just to discuss real quick.
Yeah.
Part of this is, and this is another way to look at it, you know, turn, turn the front upside down, you're getting more units, and they're paying facility charges. And those facility charges go into our capital funds to complete improvements, which could be a cure and place pipe. So once again, they're smaller, because we have smaller facility charges, but that's how I've, once again, this is very different from what, I was the same way with you, it's like, wait, that's not okay. You can't take a home and call it an ADU and build a big home, because that's not how it was trained, but when you start looking at the equity. So the way I, I discuss this with staff, is it's okay, because we're, we'll get a facility charge. There'll be some small transportation and impact fee. It's smaller. It's .23, I think. And so those things can fund those bigger improvements, which could include some of these things.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
I didn't think about that. That makes complete sense.
So I'd, I'd like to, yeah. I know what you're saying, and then you start looking at, it's just tough. Because when you collect fees, sometimes you have to spend them in a certain time, and, and this and that. But it's, it's a really good question, so I wrote it down, while I started writing down, so we'll, we'll look into that as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, if nobody else is going to go, then I'll, instead of type it out down here, so I'll remember it, I'm just going to say it. I really appreciate the thought that went into this, like, with different answers for frontage and utilities, and also appreciate the call-out of the example of, like, if somebody's got a thousand feet of frontage, like, like, we, we don't want it to kill projects. Like, we want them to do the, we want them to do this, and add housing units, and add sidewalks where it makes sense, and, and not kill projects with it. And, no, I'm, I'm really happy with this, and just, thank you.
I was waiting for some harder questions. So I'm just going to throw some, a couple more out, and I know, I'm not trying to use your time. But when we get to the subdivision part, it's slightly different, right? You know, it's middle housing, but once you subdivide, there are different rules for subdivision. So at that point, it may be that you'll have to dedicate property. I'm, I'm not saying it's to the improvements and the rest. And those are the, those are the things that we haven't quite fleshed out yet, that's the process portion. And I think we mentioned it in the agenda bill, and I just want to make this really clear, is we're, we're trying to be forward-thinking. If someone comes, I'm just going to pick on this one. If someone comes and does this, but let's say they move that blue rectangle right up to the right-of-way, right? And there's a potential to subdivide, but, and we needed more right-of-way for bike lanes or the rest. We'll, we'll make it known that you should be looking at this, because our worst-case scenario is someone builds something in an area that is future right-of-way, or builds a driveway with a certain slope, and the right-of-way comes in, and now it's too steep. So we're thinking about those things, and there's still some process to understand when these start, middle housing, I'm not talking ADUs, when they start subdividing, how we'll address that. But that's, that's ongoing discussion, it's not really involved in this right now, it's, this is more of the, the technical frontage piece. I just wanted to let you know that there's still some work to go.
And from our point of view, you guys turned this around really quickly and responded really rapidly, so like, I do not expect that this is the perfect solution for every problem that could possibly ever come up in the city of Bothell. Like, I have no doubt that we'll have to work on this code in the future, and I have no doubt that what we have right now will need to change, and we'll figure out what that is, and we'll make those changes then. So, but, but for right now, like, this is just incredibly responsive to the issues that we were seeing in the community, that were causing, causing emails. And, and I really appreciate it. So I, I don't expect it to be perfect forever, for all time, but thank you for this.
Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you so much. All right, next up is our final study session of the evening. It is a discussion, feedback, and possible direction regarding a letter of intent with Bothell Urban Methodist Church regarding, I'm going to go with Bothell United Methodist Church regarding affordable housing, city manager.
Thank you. I usually try and buy people time and look at me, I'm going to buy myself some time.
Sorry, I'm not as good at buying time as you are.
In transit too, so it's all right. Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. We are back tonight to continue a conversation that started, gosh, just about a year ago. And so want to, want to thank council for, for that time. Our final topic tonight is, again, it's returning from about 11 months ago, when council provided direction to staff, or to me, to the city manager, to negotiate a letter of intent, also sometimes returned to, referred to as a term sheet. You'll see that interchangeably, if people are trying to figure out what these things are, with the Bothell United Methodist Church and their partners, regarding a proposed affordable housing project on Lot P South. So tonight, we're going to talk more about that. We will want to recall that, that Bothell United Methodist Church has expressed the desire to develop affordable housing in Bothell. That has been an ongoing conversation. And they are seeking, at the bottom line, they're seeking property from the city of Bothell as a contribution to support that development. The negotiations have been ongoing, there's been back and forth, there's been some pauses, there's been some pencil sharpening and some changes that we'll talk about a little bit tonight. And ultimately, I'm not here to say that we have a perfect LOI, but we are at a point where I don't think we can have any negotiations further without input from the city council. So this is the opportunity to get that feedback, and then I will be tracking for consensus on what we do next, so we will cover that. The council action that is anticipated tonight is that, again, you'll hear about the LOI in the current form, and I'll be seeking direction on next steps regarding an affordable housing letter intent with the Bothell United Methodist Church. And I will note too, that in this action, we are very deliberate of saying to maximize affordable housing on Lot P South. That has been a theme that came up back in 2022, when the council discussed this, it was reiterated last summer, so we'll talk about how that is being done. Just by way of background, again, when we talk about Lot P South, that might not be a name that everybody has at the top of their, their list, so to orient people of where that property is, it's not very far away. So you'll see, we have the compass up in the right-hand corner, below that is City Hall, and if you go directly to the west is Lot P South. It is adjacent to Popkinie Stadium, also, yeah, about, what, two blocks north of the library. It's located at the southwest corner of Thoris Street and Popkinie Way. The zoning is for downtown neighborhood. And then, just in terms of the size of the lot, it is 1.67 acres, and generally level all the utilities located in public rights away. So this is a appropriately suitable piece of property for development. There's also, I'll note in the packets tonight, we do have Attachment 2 to the Agenda Bill is another fact sheet that goes over some more details about Lot P South. This information is also online, so talks about the acquisition of that property back in the summer of 2010, and some of the activities that have taken place since then. Looking at the overview of events that have led to the LOI development, I want to take you back to, prior to 2022, we can go back, but again, the churches expressed the desire for affordable housing in Bothell. There'd been some discussions about Civic Center property and other surplus potential piece of property that the city was doing cleanup work on. That, that ended up being refocused to P South property. There was, again, I was reminded, as I was getting up, an update on, on BRT earlier today, there was a map that was being used that had a potential parking facility, which is kind of an old one. But there was at one point also a conversation about Sound Transit acquiring this property for parking garage, and then, as they do have in the, in many of their programs, of them being able to use surplus land for affordable housing, so there was conversations there. Concurrently, there was also contamination cleanup going on on Lot P South. In May 3rd of 2022, there was, joke with our team, I remember it well, this was the meeting, the first meeting after my contract was signed, it was also my daughter's birthday, so I was not watching the meeting, but there was a lot on the agenda that night. And so the council direct, did give direction to staff at that time. There was a number of options, those who were watching or were on council might remember, there was a decision tree presented to council, and had to do with what to do with this, with the piece of property. And some of the direction that council provided was to keep Lot P South as one parcel, so again, as opposed to dividing it for multiple projects, it makes it to be a larger, a larger piece of property. Again, reiterating maximizing affordable housing. And then there was direction then around what to do in terms of soliciting a proposal of how do we find out then what affordable, if we're going to maximize affordable housing with whom, was the question. So the council's direction to staff was to solicit a proposal from the Bothell United Methodist Church. They delivered, there was a proposal submitted August of 2022. At the time, there was a partnership for that project with, with the church, and then Bridge Housing and Habitat for Humanity. What that proposal contemplated was 144 affordable units, 50 to 60% AMI. That was going to include then, in addition to affordable units for rent, 10 for-sale townhomes, and then also, a, a big element of that project also was some public-private partnerships in terms of providing retail open space and gathering space. We began reviewing that proposal in the fall, kind of getting arms around, okay, what does this say, and looking for concerns, and what, what are some of the criteria we need to do? At the same time, we were also working to get to the final stages of receiving an NFA, or a no further action letter, related to the cleanup of that site. So that was all ongoing there. One of the things that I will also note that was a concern, and some of this was fresh eyes from, from the team, as we had new members joining, community development, myself, was looking at, in terms of the proposal, what had been contemplated was the idea of the city transferring the land right up front. And you may recall, when there was the partnership with Habitat, there was a, a notion, because funding for these projects is, is a significant issue, there was a thought of severing a piece of that property to sell to Habitat for Humanity, and then using that money to help fund and move forward the 144 affordable units portion of it. The concern that emerged around the, how do we put this together? And as we were thinking about, and this is a new scenario for both sides of the partnership, including the city, we haven't done this very much, if at all. And so what we were looking at was minimizing the risk to the city, knowing that projects of any development kind are, do carry some risk and can fall apart. And so we were looking for a strategy of how do we get to a point of, if something does not happen, the city still owns the parcel in full? And so we were looking for another way. Council asked for an update, and so in July of last summer, we did bring in that update and had a conversation in which council did reiterate that desire for maximizing affordable housing, and then to direct me to go enter into negotiations for a letter of intent. Tonight then, you're getting the first touch of considering what is in that letter. Hopefully that helps a little bit of how, how we got here and refreshed it. I want to cover briefly, what is a letter of intent? Because, again, this isn't something that necessarily, if any of us are out in a real estate market, we're not talking about, about an LOI. So what the, what this does for us in, in the conversation with the church and their partner, is it outlines the general terms and conditions under which we would enter into a, a purchase agreement to sell property. Now, what I want to point out is, is that, again, 11 months is a long time, and there has been, one of the changes, and we'll, we'll touch on that in a second, is that based on the council feedback that was received back in the July, there was a strong support and desire for a project like what Habitat was going to bring to, to this, but also a recognition of, as we think about this project, and this property, and the proximity to downtown, that perhaps this wasn't the appropriate project for 10 townhomes, of what would be the trade-off? That was kind of one of the things that we were considering, is what would be the number of units that could happen if there wasn't the townhome, home portion of this? And so, for example, then, that, that slowed down some of the negotiations, is that partnership had to have discussions, and we looked at it, and, and then, you know, Bridge and the church had to look at, well, what do they want to do going forward? The other thing though, that why the LOI takes a little bit of a time, is that really this does start setting the stage then for a discussion of a purchase and sale agreement. Not to step on my own speaking points, but what we would be doing is, if, the way that this is drafted now, if council did direct to move forward, then we would have 90 days to come to what the framework of that agreement looks like. So we're not looking at another year, we would be looking at, again, if this was to move forward in July, we'd be looking at sometime in October. The, that would be the next thing. So what I also want to cover is what it isn't, because I think that that can be confusing to people. Of any time the city is entering into some sort of legal agreement, people have visions of, oh, this is done, there's, all the, all the decisions are made. So what I want to be clear about is, is that the LOI does not approve a specific design. We do not have a specific AMI, we don't have a specific number of units, we don't have a picture to show, like, right now, we have a blank lot on the screen, we don't have a picture to show of exactly what this project is going to look like. Now, of course, the, the partners that we're negotiating with, they probably do have these designs, and there's, there's concepts, but similar to when, I'm going back to the last time the council was considering some land use amendments, we had a conversation around the fact that what is proposed at the land use amendment portion is a concept. But what we don't know, we don't know what's going to be built until the permits file, right? So that's when we get, that's when we have images. So all we would have at, at this point is, is, I'm, there's, there's work, it's the Tetris of what will fit on this, this project, and we can go from that. There's also a realization that there will be, as the, as the church and their partner go out for funding, there will probably be additional requirements that aren't considered right now. So there will be seeing changes. So the LOI has some, has some of the specificity nailed down into what would be seen from this, but then we do enter into an agreement that says, okay, so for purchase and sale, here's what we want to see, and it starts getting a little bit more rigid, then the project gets more specific and rigid as we go to permits. So let's take a look at what the LOI considerations are. So again, this is the first time this has come back to council as an agreement that's been negotiated. So I want to, I think there's really four key areas that council would want to consider tonight. So the first is the purchaser. So just to be very clear, the agreement is between the city and the Bothell United Methodist Church. Those are the two, the two parties. What would then happen, because we, we even heard from tonight from Bridge Housing, is that the intent would be, and it's spelled out in the LOI, that the Bothell United Methodist Church would then be collaborating with Bridge Housing, so there are some responsibilities that would be the churches, and some that would be bridges. We've also then asked the question of, in curiosity of this, of how long of an agreement are they contemplating? So what we've learned is that the partnership would include an agreement between the two parties for a ground lease, between the church to Bridge to control the property for their proposed project, and that would last for 99 years. So we have then inserted language into the LOI. While we don't control the negotiation between Bridge and the, and the church, we wouldn't want to, we have inserted language into the LOI that would reflect the notion of that this property would be used for affordable housing for 99 years to mirror that amount of time. So you'll see a nexus there. In terms of the structure then, again, there is intention of, of a ground lease to Bridge, and Bridge would then be constructing, what their, their target is right now, is for 200 units of affordable housing. So that would be, again, I, where that is significant, is that when we talked about this the last time, it was around 144, council had an interest in trying to drive that higher, and so that number of 200 has been, has been a target. Again, it could be slightly higher, it could be slightly lower, and we'll know more as, as things move forward. But that's then essentially what, who would be, who would be doing what. Now, there would also be, I watched this morning, actually, the conversation we had last summer, there was an interest of trying to balance, we want to maximize the number of units, but we don't want the quality of life or the amenities for the community to be diminished. That was a statement and sentiment shared by the council at that time. So with this, in this too, is that, and we heard in public comment again tonight too, is that there is still a concept of open space, of community gathering space, and some, some training space that would also then be run through, I think there's some definition to, to be put in there, that's not specified in the LOI, but that's still part of the concept of what we'd see here. The next factor is, is price, and again, as the, the council has not had a discussion of what price the land would be conveyed at, we do know that obviously there's a transaction, so we know that would be happening, and that conversation is happening tonight. What is noted in the draft LOI is the request from BOMC, is the property to be transferred at no monetary cost to the purchaser, which then would equate to the city's contribution towards affordable housing. So we can talk more about that if there's questions, but certainly not an uncommon practice of when there are affordable housing projects in this part of the country and other parts of the country. other parts of the country. And we've heard this shared, the sentiment shared at council meetings over the past year as well, is that the the market is not going to develop affordable housing without some sort of incentive. And in this case, one of those incentives is being able to provide some form of public contribution to a project. So the question before council is, is that is that the price that you would be be interested in? And then the final factor that I want to highlight, and again, as you read through the LOI, that I would imagine that there would be questions about is around the timeline. Again, to clarify some things from tonight, too, as we've heard public comment, is around what what would be happening. So this LOI is not approving a project. I think I've said that, but I want to reiterate that. And it's also not, we're not going to be signing over a deed or anything tomorrow. So what what this does is, as drafted, if if it came back to a council at a future meeting, and that's where you land tonight, the next step would be approval of the LOI. And then that LOI directs the city manager to negotiate a purchase and sale for the property within 90 days. And it's a contract, a purchase and sale contract, so not actually executing on the purchase and sale, but to negotiate a contract. We'd have 90 days. Again, that would, if if we went July, 90 days would be October. While the LOI is a non-binding agreement, the proposed language does include a commitment that what we will do is we'll work together in good faith, negotiate a mutually acceptable purchase agreement within 90 days. And then during that point in time, one of the things that is important to note for council, and I think for the community as well, is a commitment that at that point, we're exclusively negotiating. So there'd be no direction of saying, go see what you can do, but let's create a backup plan and see if there's a if there's another option out there. So our full focus would be on, in 90 days, can we come away with a contract that we can do? And that is spelled out on page 184 of your packet tonight. Also relevant to the timeline is that the land still would not change hands in October. So I want to make sure that that's really clear. If we do look at the conditions on page, starting on page 186 of the packet, there are sellers' conditions and purchasers' conditions that all have to take place before the actual sale of the land goes forward. So I mentioned the the concern that that we had in the fall of 2022 around how some of the timelines of this was, and wanting to protect the city's investment of what we don't want to do is to make a contribution towards affordable housing and have something happen where that's not what goes forward. So we want to make real sure, and I and the church wants to make real sure, too, of they don't want to commit to something and Bridge doesn't want to commit to something that can't be done either. So there's a number of conditions, again, on page 186 that talks about, we have an exhibit that I'll read from here in a second, about what what we the sellers receive of items listed in Exhibit A of what we would expect from the purchaser. We're looking for development schedules, we're looking for land use approvals, we need a construction schedule, we need to make sure permits are ready to issue, we need to make sure that there's a contract of somebody's been hired to do the project, we need a financing plan to make sure that it can be actually paid for, and we need a covenant that says that there will be affordable housing on this site for 99 years that mirrors the agreement. Some of the things in Exhibit A, then, are that we we would expect to know the number of affordable rental and for sale units to be produced. So again, it's early to be asking for that now, but that is an expectation of what we'd want to know before we before the property was actually conveyed. As we go into purchase and sale, we're going to want to know estimated estimated project timelines, sources, financing terms, and and there will be other letters of intent from other funders. So this agreement, when we talk about affordable housing, spells out the criteria of that we need to have affordable housing at at least 80% AMI, and again, for 99 years. But there will be, as as the partners go out for funding, we certainly know that there will be other conditions that are placed on here, and they will be then have other covenants to go on. So the city will have a covenant that goes on to the the sale of this, this gets recorded, there will be other conditions that are on there, and all of those will be stacked and part of what makes the the project come together. And at the end of the day, Bridge and the Bothell United Methodist Church, they have to look at all of that and say, yes, this is still, this is the vision that we want to do, and all of that has to come together before before the project moves forward. One last thing, and it's not really reflected on the slide, but what I do want to make sure to clarify any potential confusion is, is much like we don't have then a project designed, it also doesn't mean that the normal things that people would expect in terms of public process going forward aren't going to happen either. So much like if we were, if if anything was going to be built on that property or any property, there is still then permitting, there is still public notice, there is still appeals, there are still potential, you know, again, appeals to the hearing examiner, there's this, our staff have to review, does it meet the criteria of the code? All of that still has to happen, and there will be postcards and notices, and so the community will be engaged the same way that they will on any other development, including, you know, the one that we've, we're getting close to completion on on Lot D, the same things that would have happened there. So I just want to point that out of that none of that goes away. It still happens as part of the development, so the community will still have an opportunity to speak into what is actually going to be constructed. So that's that's the high level overview and orientation. I know you have the agreement in your packet, you'll probably have some additional questions. Coming out of tonight, when we talk about potential direction, I just wanted to clarify there's lots of things you can do, but three options that are in front of you is you may say, you know what, we need more information, bring back answers to the following questions, there could be an additional study session. You could direct to further negotiate sometimes, like with this last presentation, you know, this it's, there's no negotiation of council can give direction of we want to see code that does this, that and the other thing. Of course, this is an agreement with another party. So any changes you'd want to see, can't commit to anything tonight, we would have to go have those conversations and come back. And you can also say, you know what, maybe, maybe this is also the agreement that you were looking for, and so you can direct the staff to return, I would suggest in July, and then at that point, have a vote on whether or not to direct staff to sign the LOI to negotiate a purchase and sale, and then we'd be back in nine within 90 days with that contract for consideration. So that's at the high level of of kind of what what lays before us tonight. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you to see if you have any questions for me.
Thank you so much for talking through all of that, especially the the community engagement piece that comes in the future and that all that whole building process. I think it's really helpful to kind of get an overview. One of the first questions I have, and I'm not trying to be like persnickety about this, but is it more accurate to say that our partner in this this effort is actually the nonprofit that was formed to conduct this this process? Because we're not actually, like, are we actually partnering or are we actually contracting with the church? Or are we partnering and contracting with a nonprofit?
Great question. No, we are, in fact, it would be, so if you look at the opening of the letter of intent, page 184, this letter of intent outlines the proposed purchase by the Bothell United Methodist Church. I I know there has been some confusion, there is a nonprofit that's been formed most likely, from what I understand, and again, we'll get these details if if and when this project moves forward. But if that, if the nonprofit were to be involved, it would be more in terms of the operation of the community space, not, but the transaction would be with the church. We heard in public comment tonight, one of the things we heard from Reverend Joyner was that I believe that part of the consideration for that is that there is an RCW that has to do with increased density bonus for affordable housing located on properties owned by religious organizations, as well as in terms of the very competitive nature of the financing for affordable housing projects, there can be some competitive advantage for religious institutions as well. And so, you know, that, I think this is different than some of the things that we may have considered in the past earlier and even last summer, seemed like this was going to be something that was going to go to to the to a nonprofit, but no, this would be, in fact, with the church.
And just to be clear, it is perfectly legal to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with a church?
Yes.
Cool. Next question that I have is, I like, like I said earlier, I like visuals, and so I Googled Bridge Housing during our meeting tonight, and I looked at some of the developments that they have done across, you know, they said, the West Coast. And so I looked specifically just at the Pacific Northwest, and I think it is worthwhile for all of us in the community to take a look and see what they mean when they say this is what we do, and see just how successful and beautiful their buildings are. There are a couple of the of these buildings that have been built in Seattle, and I'm wondering, would it be possible, sort of like in the vein of the middle housing walking tour, could we do like a field trip? I don't know, the planning commission, community development, and have an opportunity as a community to to be introduced to Bridge as a partner and see how they operate and run their buildings?
Yeah, I mean, what I would, yes, and I would say, again, I'd keep the focus on the LOI is not with Bridge. So you, the first question is going to have to be is, is do you want to enter into a contract? If that, as that happens, you know, again, it would be, there's always an option of touring multiple affordable housing sites. Maybe you want to see something by other developers other than Bridge as well, because it's less about, I I would say that, yes, Bridge would be happy to do that, and their credibility is known, and you might want to see other things in other developments, too. So the 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 opportunity to to get out is always a great thing, including Bridge. And I'll note, too, that I believe, I'm, I don't want to make the mistake, but I think it was St. Luke's in Ballard is just had a groundbreaking, it's a smaller scale project, but also is Bridge. And then they are, just knowing what's in the pipeline for them as well, they are currently working on a project to get funded on property that was contributed by Sound Transit and the city of Bellevue and the Spring District Development, so over by the OMFE, the Bellevue Dragon still comes to me, but a maintenance facility, there's something about Sound Transit and cities that start with B and having maintenance facilities located. But there, there is an anticipated project there as well that will be, that is not being built, but is being, or not quite yet, but there is being sought for funding. So there's a number of projects already existing and more to come.
Yep. And I would also say that listed on the website is one that's going up at Northgate, right around where the Kraken play, so that redevelopment of Northgate Station. Yeah, so they, like, I just, I I think your point is well made that that the church and the Bothell Urban Project can decide who their developer is in the future, and it doesn't necessarily have to be Bridge. It is being discussed that it is Bridge. Am I understand that correctly?
Let me, let me rephrase that. Our agreement, so their agreement is their agreement, and yeah, I, there's no reason to expect that it would be anything other than those two entities. But our agreement is with the church, it's not with Bridge directly. And so just making sure in terms of as we as we do the first thing first, that was my only point. But again, in terms of having an interest in touring affordable housing sites, I don't think there's anything that would that would hold us back on that. We might want to look at the timing and when that happens.
Okay, yes, and that is clear. Thank you for just specifying that, you know, this is an agreement that we have with with a religious organization so that they can maximize their effectiveness in the project. And they're partnering with Bridge, and so our community has a vested interest in understanding what is Bridge Housing, what do they do, how can we learn more? And so, you know, I maybe skipped a couple steps in my reasoning to say, hey, let's take a tour, but also thank you for kind of walking us through that process.
Well, and I, I think it's a great point, and I also would suspect that, and again, I don't, I'm not committing anybody to anything, but I suspect there will be more information coming from Bridge to the community and from, you know, the United Methodist Church to the community as well. And so we'll look for opportunities. Again, if this is the direction that it goes, that's always an option.
Is that going to happen as we, you're negotiating the, assuming we move forward the person, within the next three months?
Again, that would be something that would be done independent of any requirement of the city. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm presuming, again, having seen other affordable housing projects develop in communities, that there will be community opportunities to know more.
I checked with Jenny, she's done, so I'm not interrupting, I'm next. Just for the record. So I really appreciate the information. I think the piece about conveying the land directly to the church, which is the nonprofit, even just in public comments tonight for the project, is is not 100% settled amongst people who are proponents. And I think there are, and I'm not talking about Bothell United Methodist in particular, I think amongst the spectrum of religious organizations that we find in our community, there are concerns either about them or about other religious organizations that an individual has ever dealt with. Is there an opportunity, or is there a law that makes it that we don't need this opportunity to put language in the agreement about just, you know, this is for everyone, there is no exclusion, there is no, you have to be a United Methodist to live here sort of deal, just to help? I can understand wanting to take advantage of RCWs that aid the project, because the goal is the affordable housing, but I want to build a safeguard in there that we can point to as this is for everyone.
Yeah, so a couple of things, we can look at that in terms of, let me look at that, and when and if this comes back, not only will I have this with me, I'll put it in the packet, but today I was wanting to make sure that I didn't get the RCW citation wrong, so I printed it out, because that's what I do. But if you actually read through our state law and what was created to give that exemption, one of the things that is carved out in state law, so again, state law can change, 99 years, we don't know, but what it says right now is the affordable housing development does not discriminate discriminate against any person who qualifies as a member of a low-income household based on race, creed, color, national origin, sex, veteran or military status, sexual orientation, or mental or physical disability, or otherwise act in violation of the Federal Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988. So from a standpoint of state law, that's where we start with, there's some other requirements in there, so we'll make sure to get that out to council and again, in a future packet.
Okay, I think if we get to where we have an FAQ, that's also a good point. I I do have a couple other questions. So some of the, like, reality-based concerns that really resonated with me, like, one of them, so this project as proposed right now is a proposal, it's, it's, it's been vetted to an extent, but like, permits aren't filed, right? Things can change as things develop. So let's say, for whatever reason, it can't get funding to become a 50% family unit available to folks within 50 to 60% area median income, and it's a different population that is served, and that's what comes back to us in the end. At that point, if it's not what we thought it was going to be, will we have an opportunity to say, that's not quite what we were envisioning here, let's go back to the table? I think what we don't want is to feel that that there's a bait and switch ever, and I think that that's a sensitivity for a lot of folks.
Let me, let me do some more research on that. What I can tell you is, again, that the the city has not even put the requirement in to the level of what I think is intended in the project, intended in the project. But you make a good point if that funding sources can can require, you know, if that, if the number one objective is gets funded, so there could be some requirements. But let me, let me do some more digging on if there would be, on what that would look at. What I would say is, again, is keep in mind the LOI itself is non-binding.
Yeah.
So even if we entered into that, again, if you find something out, but the, probably the answer to the question about what the the AMI levels required for the project and that sort of thing would would come later, we'll know, but so let me, let me have some more conversation about that.
Yeah, and and that totally makes sense. It's, it's both early in the process, but also important that that if we all leave this meeting and we're like, it's workforce housing for families who work here, who could now live here, and then what what the funding that's available is for just a different population, we're going to feel funny about it, the people we talk to are going to feel real funny about it. And and so it's not with thinking that there's a goal of a switcheroo, but just that these things are wild to try and track down all the funding and everything.
Yes, certainly, and I, well, that is one thing that I would, I would caution from our standpoint is to not communicate of exactly what what this will do, right? Again, there's intent, but, so a good, a good caution, and yeah, I appreciate the, appreciate the feedback.
Relatedly, and I think this is my last question, the same is true of the amenities that are being The same is true of the amenities that are being advertised. Again, it, it, it's easy to fall in love with such a project, right? If, if job training program or office space for human services agencies or other community space becomes not feasible, um, as this develops, I, I really wanna make sure that we know the points in the project's life cycle that we can say, hey, this is pretty different than what we thought it was gonna be. And do kind of a, you know, just talk about it, figure out if, if it's still right for that. Without also making it feel like, you know, um, Bothell United Methodist and their partners are like always on edge about the city, like freaking out. So there's a balance there for sure. But, um, given that this is kind of our first pass at a project like this, I think there's a lot of concerns that we wanna be able to address.
Thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, that's something that we do during the purchase and, within the next three months. It's not like once the contract is signed after three months, assuming we agree and all that stuff, we, can we still jump in? It's like, oh, no, we don't like this design.
Yes, although what I would caution is, is again, it will still not be, it'll still be based on a concept. Where will be ninety days from now, will still be based on a concept. So we'd be looking at the conditions would be needed to be set in a purchase and sale agreement. But we won't know at the time of like when this comes back in October. So just to set expectations. I don't believe we will.
And then they would have five years to meet those conditions.
Yeah, thank you, actually, and I think I left that out of my presentation around the five, the timeline, but, um, so good nudge.
No, you got, you got it in the presentation.
Did I?
I just wanted to like make sure that as we talk about ninety days, like.
The significance of the, of the five years too is that it's, it's a competitive space right now for getting funding for affordable housing. And so, um, again, we wanted to find a duration of finding a balance between not making it feel like there's a clock ticking at all times. So giving some space for finding the right funding and not having to push to get the first available funding. But to also make sure that this project is able to get funding that supports the vision that has been considered for the community. And not saying, gosh, we gotta take whatever we can get in two years and make, meet any conditions. So we're trying to provide that. Again, five years can always be extended. I think at the same time, we also didn't wanna go indefinite because I definitely know from council that there is a desire for affordable housing in Bothell. And so we wanna make sure that ultimately, the, the outcome, I think that we're all looking for is a successful development. So, um, we wanna make sure that we don't, that it doesn't tick on forever either. So can't be too aggressive, can't be too indefinite.
To add to that, it's not just the council desire. I mean, it's state law now that we have to meet certain affordability requirements within a certain period of time, certain AMIs and all that. So I think it's not like, oh, we'd like to do this. It's a state mandate.
I think the state mandate is you have to plan for it, but you don't actually have to. They're not requiring you to meet it. I mean, it's important to, to meet it, but in terms of state law, it's only the requirement to plan, so. All right, I'll jump in with some questions. No one's, no one's talking about price, so I'll, I'll start the conversation on price. How was the monetary pricing determined? Was that, um, was that just a, a number that was requested? Or has there been any, uh, I think you said there's been no negotiation at this point. Is that right?
Correct, and so, I mean, it, as council knows, we haven't had a discussion about what the price would be. Um, and so from a negotiation standpoint, um, that leaves me in a, like, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak for you without your direction. And that direction takes place here in council chambers. So, um, the, the conversation has been around, again, uh, I, I would say that the, the viewpoint of this would be is, what is the level of contribution that the, that the council is interested in supporting for this project towards affordable housing? And land is one of the biggest barriers to affordable housing projects. And so, yes, the request that's come in is for a full contribution of the land to clear that hurdle.
Okay, I, I know there's been a lot of numbers that have been thrown out tonight. Just so everything is clear, we have accurate numbers, statements, things like that. From what I understand, the last appraisal was in twenty twenty-two. The property's value was at six million dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, so two years later, property prices have not gone down, so it's likely to be six million or more at this point. I know you're not an appraiser, but.
I, I mean, yeah.
One would assume that pricing has, since it has not gone down, it's probably gone up or stayed the same.
Especially in, you know, again, in the commercial real estate space and, yeah, absolutely.
Um, and then in terms of, um, cost for cleanup, I know we paid some, uh, the state paid some out of the Department of Ecology. Lawsuits, do we know approximately how much that sum was?
We do. It's, it's around four million dollars, uh, is where things are at right now. When we purch, when we look up, um, the per, that includes the purchase price of one point nine million dollars. Legal fees, cleanup and remediation, um, some of the things even just around the operations of, as we've been cleaning up, we have to keep the site secure cuz we don't want somebody sees a gravel lot and goes dumps their oil there. We can't have that. Um, legal services, appraisal services. Um, and so it's that total costs, um, of what we have is roughly six million dollars. And then, again, things that have happened in this very chambers that, um, people may or may not have tracked. But there was a legal settlement, settlement from a lawsuit that was received by the city in twenty twenty-three of approximately one point nine million dollars that goes against that. So it nets out at about four million dollars.
Okay, so we're into it for four million. It's worth six, potentially more. Historically, have we ever given away a piece of property outright? I know with the SAMA apartments, we did do a price reduction, um, on that piece of property at a pretty good rate, to establish some affordable housing there. But have we ever outright donated a property? If so, what was the value? I'm just trying to establish if there's a precedent in the past, or if this is a new precedent that we're potentially setting.
So this is new space for Bothell. Um, and so you're right, SAMA, uh, the, that property was sold for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I don't know the exact, um, uh, appraisal of, of the land at the time. It was higher. It was maybe not substantially higher, but it was, there was a discount offered. So in, in Bothell, really, then that, I, I, you know, we, we ha, do have, um, our, across the street, we do have the SHAG housing that does offer affordable housing. But again, that wasn't, that wasn't something that the city was participating, participating in, that is the SHAG model. And so really, SAMA is the first affordable housing development that we have in Bothell. So there isn't another example in Bothell. There are other examples in our region, if that's helpful to know. And again, like, the, the commonality of that, of what makes it relevant is that, as we can all understand, is the land is gonna be a big factor in the price of, of development. And that is part of what makes market race housing is, is as high, high as it is. So if you wanna drop the affordability, then something needs to be down there. So I did ask, um, where, as you know, we're a, a partner city in Regional Coalition for Affordable Housing, uh, or ARCH. Got some recent examples, just to, um, ask them quick, quick analysis of examples. And so in Issaquah, um, they donated land for, to the YMCA for two affordable thousand, yeah, two projects, uh, to Habitat for a ho, affordable ownership project.
What were the values of those lands? Do you know?
Don't know. No, we can find out if that's helpful. But again, I think that the question becomes again, is the contributing, contribution of the land is, is that. So Mamish also donated to a Habitat project for affordable cottage housing. Bellevue, again, a couple of recent examples. One is the Bridge Housing Project that's under development in, um, in the Spring District. Also donated land for Hope Link for transitional family housing. Redmond, uh, land leased property to Providence for a million dollars for, um, affordable senior housing, the Pace Center, uh, as well as quite recently to Plymouth Housing, um, for a project that you're probably familiar with. And then in Kirkland, there's also been the city purchased land, actually, so it wasn't land that they already had, but they used taxpayer dollars to purchase land for, um, uh, Women and Family Shelter. Uh, and then also purchased land, um, to contribute to KCHA in exchange for a maintenance facility. So they did a swap. So, so there, that's where we do see public entities getting involved again to try and lower that, um, that threshold.
Okay, that, that is helpful. In terms of the closing requirements, the, the five-year period, um, seems like a lot. I know it's, it's a lot to get funding. There's a lot of funding cycles. But there's, there's no guarantee like that we get to the end of five years and then this thing is gonna close. And if we don't, would we, we'd end up back with the property again, correct? Or we would never have sold it officially?
Correct, yeah, we, it would never, yeah, that's a good distinction. I was about to say yes, but you're right. Yeah, the better distinction is that, again, it would never have not been the city's land. So the, it would be an opportu, opportunity cost and time, but, um, there would be no, uh, basically at that point. And, um, again, a future council would have the decision to potentially extend. Or if at any point the project doesn't move forward, then also the consideration of next step of, again, do you wanna stay with the commitment to affordable housing at that site? Do, um, uh, search, seek for a different partner? That could happen in any, at any wa, any way that we could get to the point of, of a purchase and sale agreement, projects do fall through. So that would be, that would be the next step.
Okay, um, so I'm just thinking about like when we'd actually see development on the site. It could be twenty thirty or beyond before we actually see the development. Based on that five-year time period, it'd be ninety days for a, for a purchase and sale. And then was it a hundred, a hundred and eighty feasibility?
Yeah.
And then another five after that?
Correct, correct. And, um, so it could, it could be less, it could be more. And again, that, that five years would be to, to get to the transaction. And then, I mean, eighteen months or so to get, well, I actually, permit ready. Yeah, so you're, that would probably be about when construction could start at the out port. It could happen sooner too. So, um, while, like, trying to, trying to strike that balance of reality of that there is really competitive and this is a very compelling project. So we don't wanna also say that it's not gonna get funded in a year or two. One of the things that, um, I will note, um, in terms of, this is, you're learning my negotiation styles. I, I actually, originally, we were talking about four years and I offered five. And part of that is, is that a lot of the funding rounds do take place in the fall. And so we're coming right up into it. And so recognizing that we are here, July is right around the corner. We talked about August recesses and everything. I didn't wanna like have, if we got to a yes and then the first year clicked by, um, really the next day like that. It felt to me like in some ways, we could be creating a condition where it's really a three-year window. And so the five extends to try and accommodate for the fact of there's other funding that might be available corporately, that sort of thing. But there are a lot of state funding sources that are, are in, in other, um, entities that are fall-based.
Okay, that's, that's, um, helpful. I, I think when I'm thinking about it this week, when I was looking at it, thinking about it, um, I just, it, I always go back to, as a council, you know, this is a piece of property for the city where we have a fiduciary responsibility to steward this thing the right way. Um, I think affordable housing is a very laudable goal for us to have. Uh, we, we all know we need it, you know, it's fit with our goals and our visions, um, of what we want our community to be. We've got a willing partner in the community that really wants to, to do this. And they've made some steps in the right direction to get this done and get to get this ball rolling. So all of those things are, I think are, are wonderful. Other things I also think about are highest and best use. I think about, uh, the mayor's favorite urban three planning and, um, parking lots and things like that. And I know, um, we've got a surface lot that KC Metro owns, and there's been developments on those lots, um, in our area as well. And I think about other potential places where, um, affordable housing could also be. I think about opportunity costs, you know, if we were to, um, convey it at zero cost. You know, the things that we would potentially be giving up. It could be the, um, the Riverside Trail. It could be a place for a community center that is currently being considered, but hasn't been cited yet. It could be a number of things. It could be, you know, we could have this and some of those things if we had some consideration there. So I, I think about that a lot. The, the zero dollar amount conveyance, um, I don't think that's the right number. I would be in favor of, uh, an executive session to talk about what we think the price should be. The consensus may be zero dollars and I may be on the outside of that. But I would, I appreciate an executive session, um, to have a discussion about this. And, um, we have, we have not spoken about it before and think we heard some feedback from the community that, um, they, they would appreciate that. There was talk about an RFP, so I've been thinking about that as well. You know, that is a standard process that we do go through, but not every city also has a community group that wants to do, um, good and make steps. And, you know, I think, uh, we thought about this with our, with our heart and we are trying to honor our community and the folks that are here already that wanna do good things. So, um, you know, I think, I think having this conversation is good. And that we're, we're looking at this and we are moving, um, we've moved forward to a draft letter of intent. But I also, again, think about one-way doors versus two-way doors. Two-way doors are decisions you can make and you can walk back through the other side if it doesn't turn out the way you thought it was going to. Um, and one-way doors are, you, once you walk through, you can't go back to the other side. And with this letter of intent, um, it's gonna be an exclusive ninety-day, um, good faith negotiation. And there really isn't, uh, going back once we sign this. If we can't in good faith come together on an agreement, um, that's one thing. But if we hear more from the community, if we go through the community outreach process and we're hearing things that, you know, really resonate, it's difficult to walk back during that time. So those are things that we have to think about in ways we're considering this. I'm not saying what we should do, just throwing things out there for everybody to think about. And, um, I've got a few other thoughts. Only one, other one I would wanna throw out is, um, if the city wanted to participate and if there are tax incentives for, um, religious institutions and potential funding sources, could there be an opportunity for us to convey it over, have all the funding done, and then convey it back afterwards? Does it have to remain in the ownership of the religious institution in perpetuity? Or could it be conveyed back through a contract after all the funding has been obtained? And the city could then, you know, retain control over the property. And in ninety-nine years, if, you know, we've solved the housing issue, affordability issue, you know, maybe there's a higher and better use at that time, then the city could then move forward and redevelop the property for whatever that is. I'm just throwing ideas out there, finding ways to make everybody happy and get everybody what they want, and that could be one of those things.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing is, is finding a way of maintaining city ownership or control of the property.
Correct, yeah. We'd, we'd be contributing the property for use. And of course, trying to make sure that the funding, uh, the most available sources of funding were there and available. But if there's a way to transition it back to the city, uh, following that process, we could maintain control, redevelop in the future, if there's a better use ninety-nine years in the future, when none of us are here.
I'm not an attorney. That gives my, my, my legal spidey, spidey sense to tingle, but I'll do some research to find out a little bit more. I think anytime you, you know, go into a, an agreement where you're looking to, to, to double back, might, might not, um, work. But we can take a look at what some similar options are, if there's any, any other precedent out there, we can certainly take a look.
Okay, I, I, you know, I think we should look at everybody in good faith that they will do the, the things that they say they will do and they will steward it long into the future. I know the city will be here in a hundred years, but I know just in general, institutions come and go. Some last hundreds of years, some last much less. And at that point in time, who knows what, uh, will be of the church? I hope they're here in the community. I hope they're stronger. I hope they're bigger. I hope they're larger. I hope they're having incredible impact. But we don't know. I think as a city too, we don't know, if something were to happen to the church in the future, where would that property land? Is it gonna go to the, you know, the overseeing Methodist, um, organization? You know, would it go to another church? I've, I've seen churches that have closed down in the past and they have, some of them have sold their property and put it into a, you know, a nonprofit fund. And it's supposed to be doled out for the betterment of the community and it's not. So I just, I have that question too. What, worst-case scenario, um, where does it go?
I had a, I, I made eye contact with someone who was gonna talk to ask about something that he brought up cuz it was really interesting to me. I do also want to know if at any point the land is gonna be sold in the future. Can we, there have been properties where we have like right of first refusal and stuff, if, if that can be part of it. I understand that there's a lot of legal intricacies in, and also funding intricacies when that happens. So I expect it to be a very long memo, but I, I would really like to know. And I think that's true for, um, at least the two of us. And then the other thing, the, the one-way door, the two-way door. If we don't get to an agreement that everybody's happy with in the ninety days, then we don't proceed, right? Like, we can go back, like, it will come back to us and we'll be like, oh, that's not it. we'll be like, oh, that's not it.
That's correct, yeah, the, the LOI is in of itself non-binding in terms of, it doesn't.
In my head, it's now one of those doors that goes in a circle.
Correct.
Get out on the inside or the outside.
So, and, but I, but I will also point out to that point of, I also don't want the ninety days to sound like it's a, ultimate restriction either of like, again, the, the terms, from our side of the city, there's seven people who can decide, like, again, if there's an extension, or, you know, again, if we are negotiating in good faith, in ninety days, there was some other limitation other than it's just not going to happen, right, so, just to make that clear as well.
Cool, thank you.
Current city contributions to Arch amount to six figure?
Yeah, off the top of my head, I think our current membership dues is around like one thirty-five.
Those are like pennies, and cities like Redmond who are actually getting affordable housing are donating millions of dollars, um, of their resources and of their land, um, I've had the pleasure since being uh, uh, since the beginning of the year to talk with a couple of executive directors of affordable housing providers, in the region, and then always, the common theme is land, land is too expensive in Bothell, and it just doesn't pencil out for them to build affordable housing here, when they spend a million dollars on the land to develop, something that they have to get down at um, affordability levels below, like sixty, it just doesn't pencil out. And so, I think that when we start to put conditions on price, to try and recoup some of the investment that we've made in uh, you know, what are we do, we're at like two million is the potential benefit of selling it right now and getting ten townhomes on that land, um, versus a two million dollar investment, which is still like a drop in the bucket for affordability here. I think, um, you know, price is not really, that's not the number one consideration for me here, it's, is this in alignment with our council vision and our goals for what, twenty forty? Right, this will be ten years into a potential project, um, are we working in alignment with, community organizations that exist here, like you said, like uh, council member Micky said, um, I really appreciate that, um, several councils ago, this was, you know, under consideration, and that, um, we have, community group here that's willing to move forward and willing to really get into the weeds here, it's not easy, and this is sort of like a shot in the dark. I think that the ninety day uh, period of negotiation is pretty quick, and I don't know, how to do feasibility from the current, like, uh, engineering consultancy world, um, to do feasibility in a hundred and eighty days, that's a quick turnaround, um, and so, there's a lot that can go, uh, sort of wrong with the, the vision in the end, but I think that there are a lot of um, sort of guideposts in here, and check-in points to protect the city's interest, and so, um, you know, I think that, um, when I was brought onto council early in my onboarding, I was asked if um, I, I agreed with all of the vision that you all um, sort of came up with, and um, I do, and so I think that this uh, project still fits in that vision, um, for connected um, and healthy community, so I think, this is, the letter of intent is in alignment with our vision, and I'm okay with, moving forward with it, I don't see a lot of issues with the letter of intent, sure, the project is pretty far off, but I think that there are those guidelines, so, or the guideposts, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm actually okay moving forward from where we're at today. Um, I don't necessarily, think that um, executive session is necessary to negotiate price, but I'm willing to hear other um, council members on that.
This council member has an opinion on an executive session. Um, first off, I want to say that the project that you all have put together, the, the level of love and thought and insight clearly had to be a team effort. Um, I don't know how you could improve on it. Um, the other thing is, I'm also sensitive that some council members have received substantial amount of, money for their own campaigns, and that puts you in a tough spot of how ethical does it look when you weigh in on this project? Um, my ma- my major concern about the property is its location, 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 location. Maximizing the dollar for the property. Would the city of Bothell do better financially, selling that for six million dollars and buying a piece of property and putting it somewhere else, let me finish, let me finish. Um, we're not flush with cash, and we're not flush with surplus property. A number of people have brought up points here that I think there are all questions that we need to be thoughtfully addressing, is um, the lack of competition. Um, and I don't know how people would compete with that project, but to be fair and equitable, we ought to be saying, would anybody else like to have a skin in the game on this one? Uh, and it, someone brought up a good question, what happens if Bothell United Methodist cannot maintain the property? And I think that's a fair question, um, and then what would the metrics be on that? Uh, and the bene- the residents want to know what the benefit to Bothell is, I think that's a message that we have to be very thoughtful in how we put that out. I would really like to have a conversation in executive session about the price, six million? I think that's a council discussion. Um, do I, for me, Bothell needs to hold the ground lease on this for ninety-nine years. That's where I, that's where I lay, now, if we want to do a purchase to own at a reduced cost, that's fine, let's have that discussion, what, what would that number be? But we're not Redmond, we don't have Redmond's budget. So, we can look at what they're doing and applaud them for that, and use that as a challenge to do better, but this is a prime piece of real estate that when Bothell at the time, overpaid real estate prices for that, and it came with the gift of soil that needed to be cleaned up, it was bought with the intention of being income-producing for the city. So, we need to have this conversation about what is the benefit, and how are we offsetting on some level, for the people of Bothell to put a great project in place, either on P-South or somewhere else.
A couple of things. We have a generational opportunity here, and I'm so thankful for earlier councils, which you were on, that did make an investment in our land here, right?
I was not part of this, in fact, I was part of the community that was saying, the city of Bothell is going into speculative real estate, what are we doing, this should be left in the private entity, I was not on council at the time.
Regardless, we have a generational opportunity to do better, right? And if this parcel is the beating heart of our downtown, it's located, in an ideal location, right, it's right on rapid transit, it's um, got the natural amenities, it's close to services, it's close to, there's school capacity, there's, everything is here, right?
Okay, so a question for you, just, I mean, there's the library, what other services, we don't have, we don't have mental health facilities here, but that's something that they're going to put in the building itself. Hospital, emergency services, we transport to Kirkland. What other wraparound services?
There's a community health clinic right down the street that's walkable from there, there's rapid transit, there's, there's doctors, dentists.
We have transit, we have that all, we have that up at the other end of five two seven as well.
But no land.
Well, that's the thing, is could, and I don't think this is a fair ques- you know, start negotiating on this, but can we maximize on P-South and provide that somewhere else in Bothell with those same things?
Well, let's let Councilmember Kurt finish, actually.
I think that this proj- project has been in process for so long now, that we have expectations, right? But the ability to leverage land is the number one thing that we have to work with, right? That's the only valuable thing that we own here, is the land. The people who live here, the people who are coordinating the project and are, you know, coming up with ideas and working and building relationships with affordable housing providers and looking for money, that is an ancillary benefit that we gain from the investment of land, and so, if generating revenue was an important goal for the council, and to turn out profit, and be solely focused on the dollar, then that would be what our council vision was, right? Why is that not the number one thing in our council vision? It's not to generate revenue, it's to build a community, and so I think that this, this letter of intent is in alignment with our council vision, which we all agreed to, you all developed, and I agreed to, and I think that it's, it's incumbent on us to work within the parameters that we've set for ourselves, which is that council vision, I just don't see that, generating revenue and trying to turn a profit on the backs of the people who live here and that.
We can still, meet our vision, and like I said earlier, it doesn't have to be a profit of six million dollars, but what is it that we can do to soften that? Six million dollars would buy a lot for the people of Bothell in other areas. But it doesn't have to be six million dollars, it can be something less, but it softens the impact, so that maybe we could like, put in some more sidewalks somewhere else, or get that adaptive play equipment in. But I think, to be fair for the church, I think they need us to have the ground lease at a very, very affordable price, where the, where we can say to the public, yes, we're mindful that these are your dollars here, and still allow them to move forward on their project.
May I jump in? Perfect. Um, I continue kind of that cough, that conversation, and then back up to where I was going to start. The, the history of this conversation, I feel is pretty relevant to the conversation we're having right now. Um, the church originally came to us about the city hall lot, and we pointed them toward a corner of P-South that Sound Transit had no use for. And so they pivoted and started working on that at our request, and then Sound Transit canceled the parking garage, and, we approached them and said, hey, instead of that corner, can you take the whole lot? So they pivoted and they found Bridge, and they responded to our request again, and um, and then they came to us when Habitat was still part of it, and we asked them to maximize affordable housing without sacrificing the community amenities, so they pivoted again, responded to exactly what we were asking for, and um, and Habitat's no longer part of the project. And they have been with us through three different compositions of city councils, they have been patient, they have, responded in good faith to everything we have ever asked them to do, and, they're signing up for years more work, trying to get grant applications in, and a project built, and they're spending a million and a half of their own money on the project, like, we will never find a more good faith partner than that. Like, and I would say that if after years of directing their work toward this exact project, on this exact piece of property, like, they never came to us for P-South, we sent them there, and if we now, kind of when we're, ready to sign an LOI, say, oh no, I think maybe we should do it up in Canyon Park instead, to me, that would be incredibly bad faith on our part. Like, and, and that's not who I want us to be. City manager, um, do we know what the total cost to acquire all of the lots that were acquired? Then you're, you're not going to know this probably, but like, what, what was the total cost to, to buy all the land that we did back in two thousand tenish? And how much have we recovered from sales of property to date from those?
Yeah, I can, we can, we can get that number for you, um, the only number I think I have at my fingertips would be, besides the Sama site, would be Lot D, so, but let's, drop the buckets, let me find out.
Up and down. Um, because every property, like, the property acquisition didn't happen in a vacuum, it happened along with a lot of other properties, and to my knowledge, the other properties that we've sold except for Sama, were all sold to pretty much the highest bidder, I know that's what we did on Lot D, and we have valued one-time money and one-time revenue to the city, at the expense of everything else in most of the other sales. Um, and, like, look, if you believe we should sell for maximum one-time dollar every time, then like, I understand that, you should be really happy with a lot of the decisions we've made in the past. But just like I said in the last time this came up, like, I think it's time to focus on maximum benefit to the community, um, because in all of the other conversations that I've been a part of since I've been on council, we have ended up selling it for maximum dollars. Um, and I, I would like to see something a little different, and rather than treating that in, one vacuum like this lot, we're just like, oh, we bought it and we gave it away, well, no, like, we bought a bunch of land, and then we sold a bunch of land, and we probably haven't lost money on, the whole, or if we have, it's probably not that much, and um, and we have a really cool project here. Um, I don't view this as gifting them the property, I view this as an investment in two hundred affordable housing units and community amenities. And if we want affordable housing, this is what it takes, and I, like, we know this is a really big problem. Councilmember Kurt brought up it's a generational opportunity, this doesn't happen every day, where you have a community organization that's been around for a long time, that truly has the best interest of the community in mind, um, and we have a piece of land that's available in a climate where we think we can get something like this funded. And I would also just point out that, oh, wait, if I remember correctly, a city gifting the land is very much a point in favor in grant applications, per our conversations, is that?
Uh, I don't know, I don't know that that's the case, I think that, but for sure that there's a value of, city partnership, I think that is one of the things that we're trying to accomplish with this, is to be able to, or that, that the LOI helps demonstrate early is the city participation and investment in it.
Okay.
I don't know that it, that it helps, it's certainly, where it helps is that that's, any cost that's offset from what the development would have to pay to acquire land, is less money that has to be,
Yeah.
Achieved through grants, so I don't know that there's a direct correlation other than that.
Every dollar that we wanted to charge for this property would be coming out of an affordable housing grant that's,
Correct.
Designed to help house people.
Yeah, or looking at it a different way, as if, if we didn't have land, but we were interested in contributing to an affordable housing project, we couldn't, like, it would be the, the same value.
Perfect. Um, I wanted to address, I know that we've, we've had some public comment, and there's been some thought about, like, why haven't, and conversation here about, like, why, why we haven't gone out for an RFP. I mean, first off, the conversation didn't start with us, the conversation started with the church coming to us and saying, we want to do this, and, we engaged them, and I hope that we did that in good faith. Um, I was curious a little bit about uh, the church's history in the community, so I did some research, in terms of like, who we're having a partner with, or who we're partnering with, and um, a few things about the church, so, the BMC was born when, Alice Bothell organized a hymn sing-in in Mary Ann and David Bothell's parlor on the first Sunday in November on eighteen eighty-five, and that became Bothell United Methodist's first service ever, twenty-four years before Bothell was incorporated. Um, Alice's husband, George Bothell, was the first mayor of Bothell upon incorporation in nineteen oh nine. They not only built the first church in Bothell, they built the first schoolhouse, they built the first public lending library in Bothell, and the first Boy Scouts troop in the whole state, um, was started there. They started a food bank that went on to become Hope Link, and they started the Bothell Community Kitchen to provide one free hot meal a week to our community. And finally, a few years ago, they sold a piece of property they owned and are contributing significant resources of their own toward this project. Like, they were started by Bothells, and they have been working to improve our community since before Bothell even existed. Historically, they've worked to meet the needs of the community, and today they're doing the exact same thing, to meet one of the biggest needs that we have right now, which is affordable housing, so I think we're incredibly lucky to have, like, not every city has a partner like that, that's been around for a long time, and an organization that has, over centuries, since the Civil War, like, done good in town, and they're still here doing it. So, to me, like, when they start the conversation, when they have that history, and we have these conversations with them, with, that they assume are in good faith for, with them, that they assume are in good faith for years, and they respond to every single thing that we ask them to do, going out for an RFP at the end of that is not who I want to be. And, and I, I would not be supportive of that. Um, in terms of the history, this project has been in discussion on this dais since 2021, and we're on our third iteration of council since then. Um, and I, um, you know, again, in terms of the dollar amount, um, I'm, like, this is what it takes to get affordable housing. I mean, the city manager had a whole bunch of, uh, examples of other communities that do that. And if we want to be the kind of community that lives our values, that does the difficult things, that sacrifice other potential things so that we can live our values, this is the kind of decision that that is. Um, so I'm, I'm comfortable with this LOI, and I'm comfortable moving forward with BUMC. Um, and I think us turning around now, um, I mean, honestly, if we did, I can't imagine any organization ever wanting to negotiate with us again. So, that's where I'm at.
I really appreciate that. I want to add too, this has been going on for almost four years, and we were approached first. Nothing has stopped any other organization. And we have a lot around us that other cities are making deals with and donating land to. I was kind of shocked and like really impressed that Kirkland purchased land to give away. I mean, goodness. Um, but nothing has stopped anybody from coming forward, and we are not getting a lot of people knocking on our door trying to do this and say, I would like a five-year headache to make affordable housing happen. Um, so, no RFP process aside, this did start in someone coming to us. No one else has knocked for that. And there's a very clear reason that Bothell has some units in group homes, and our arch fees go to projects in other cities and to consulting, because we haven't been able to take advantage of this before. And to be fair, when this land, all of the surplus land was purchased for $20 million that I don't think we just had sitting around, um, we were broke for a long time as a city, but we're not. Our credit rating just improved. Nothing in our budget hinges on selling this land for a profit, and something around $100 or $150 per resident in return is not going to create that generational change that the mayor and Councilmember Kurt spoke to. I also, I didn't get a chance to say this, other than in response to a, a very rude email, but campaign contributions are not deals, and they are not trades. And that is a pillar of, no, I would like to finish. And that is a pillar of democracy. Anyone who was a candidate and is now a council member has sworn an oath of office. And if there's a concern about a conflict of interest that's exceeding what is allowed under all the laws that we are trained on, then make a complaint. Don't make insinuations in a study session. We have just left dealing with a colleague who used study sessions and council conversations to say things that he couldn't back up. We don't need to return to that as a council, because we will not function appropriately. I hope that in the future, you're more circumspect.
Okay, so can I, because I'm, I'm sorry that I, that I hit, I evidently didn't express myself well. I feel badly, because what you did was legal. I mean, it is totally legal. It's just, does it, is it above re- does it, does it pass the test of how it looks? And that's a tough spot to be in, and I feel badly for you being in that spot.
And we all have to balance that, such as carving out zoning exemptions in our own neighborhoods that are next to high-density areas. There are lots of opportunities where we need to explain ourselves, and we should be able to do that. But once we levy a conflict of interest charge, it needs to be backed up. You can't just put that out there and then say, oh, I don't have any evidence. It has to be something that's investigated and done properly.
And I'm glad that you, you're saying that publicly, so that the public can hear that.
Yeah, I would also say that, uh, adding airtime in council meetings to those speculative grievances that can't be backed up, that people bring up online, is entirely unhelpful. Like, as you said, nothing illegal was done. And I would say that nothing even remotely inappropriate was done. This is all in public. This is all on the PDC. Just because somebody is a member of an organization does not mean that they lose their individual right of expression. And just because we take a campaign contribution that doesn't personally, financially benefit us in any way, it doesn't mean that it's even worth talking about in terms of compromise. So, I'm, I'm disappointed that came up in the meeting tonight.
Well, it's, the community has caught off guard on this, and I stay away from social media, and there's, there's buzz about it.
There's one person trying to make a thing that's not a thing.
Okay.
It's not a thing.
Okay.
We don't need to talk about it.
That's not what I've been hearing. And, and I feel badly for you, because it is totally legal. And it's not my mess. I have other messes to deal with.
You don't need to feel bad for us. There's not a problem.
Good, fine. I, I, I won't lose sleep.
Good.
Um, I appreciate the opportunity earlier to ask questions and then hear other questions and comments that were made. Um, but I do think I need to circle back, um, and, and state where I stand on this issue. Um, and one of the things that I think is really important to remember about this is that, to, to the mayor's point, this, I don't view this as a contribution. I view this as a partnership, as an opportunity to partner with a well-respected organization in our community to fulfill a shared vision for our community. And I think of the Together Center being of, like, a model and a pillar of our region, of something that we might be looking for, um, to create here in Bothell. That Together Center costs $102 million. If we, as a community, said affordable housing's important to us, and we want to take the responsibility to build something very cool like that, I don't see any of us saying we have $102 million to put forward towards affordable housing. But I do see that we have the opportunity to partner with a community by contributing land that is not worth $102 million. Um, and so, I think this contribution, this partnership is a bargain, um, and it is an opportunity for us to live according to our values. Um, to the points that were made here, um, there has been significant opportunity for the public to engage through public comment over the last several years as this project has come forward. And I have seen in the past how calls for public engagement have been used to delay a process and to give, give airtime to people who just want to express grievances that are based in, I will say, bigotry and discrimination. And I do not think that we are a council that wants to be bullied. And we do not want bullies on the dais. And we do not want to share a dais with bullies. So, please, do not give them the airtime that they do not deserve, and do not join them.
Oh, I'm, I'm not joining them. Um, however, you talk about, um, uh, public notice and have, public having time to talk about things, and that often it feels like stalling. I will tell you honestly that there's been times where we've said, hmm, let's have a little more time to give public notice so that people can feel like they are engaging in it, and that's fair. But I have also had that feeling of, are we drawing this out longer than it needs to be drawn out? And I think that is just part of the cost of making sure that we've covered all our bases, and we can look people in the eye and say, we have given, as we've made our best effort to allow everybody to weigh in. And it does, you're right, it does take a long time. And sometimes I can see how someone might use that to their advantage. But that's part of democracy.
I was going to add, because I forgot, City Manager, I'm ready to proceed with the LOI. And I would love it if Bothell United Methodist and Bridge Housing could host with the city, I'm assuming at City Hall because of space and everything, some kind of community engagement opportunity during the 90 days would be great. I don't, you know, it's summer. Everybody's got stuff. But it would be great to have a chance for people to come out and talk. Also appreciating that there will be lots of public comment as this comes back to us for a potential purchase and sale, as the notice boards goes up, when something is actually submitted to community development, and all along the normal development lifespan. Thank you.
Same.
And that's ultimately where I was headed with my comments as well, is that I am ready to move forward with the LOI. Thank you.
Same. Same.
All right. Um, that part is clear. I think what, um, I do have a couple of commitments to bring back. Um, in terms of, of overall, I do think that in that conversation, um, we do owe some clarity around options related to ownership of not, what I'm hearing boils to the top is that we're not looking for an alternative of who to partner with in the ownership of the land, but there is an interest in knowing a little bit more information of what happens in 99 years, what happens if the something, the purchaser dissolves, like, how, how is the city, how's the city's future, i- is there any connection to this land or what, what happens? So, I do, I do want to make sure that we address that. I don't think that'll be addressed in the LOI, but we can explain how that, that works. I'll get more information. I will also make sure that we have some, um, we are working on FAQs to get posted. We'll do that about this process, um, including some clarity about what the process, pros- project investment has been in terms of downtown land acquisition, um, and, and the total, uh, cost of ownership. Councilmember Dodd, I heard you around looking for opportunities for public education, um, that they can go beyond what the city can provide, because again, we-
You know, I love an open house.
Yeah, all right, exactly. Well, yeah, and we like to serve food, so we'll try and do that too. Now, we'll see, we'll see how that goes. But again, there's always so much that the city can provide, but we can certainly provide space and we can provide opportunity. So.
One thing that I thought about, I just remembered, uh, what Councilmember Menke suggested, mentioned, uh, we all understand, you mentioned pencil out, Councilmember Kurt. It's like, what does that mean? You know, this is the, a lot of people probably don't understand the, the terminology or how the math might work, but as like a high-level explanation, here's how a real estate developer might want to figure out if something works out. And when we say we want to, even if we sell it for a dollar, when we say we want to contribute land, here's the costs that a developer will incur and the land would, uh, including land. And if you take out land cost, then here's how much per unit cost will be for the actual end resident, you know, like explaining, and maybe not be us, maybe.
Right. Would it work to bring, uh, example of a funded project, for example, of like, here's what went towards land, to design, to administrative costs, to operations?
All those examples you gave, that would be a good to look at, at those things, you know?
I'm also curious to hear of, like, I, I pulled up, um, on page 191 of our, of our, um, our agenda packet. It's highlighted all of the various lots, well, many of the lots that were bought in that $20 million acquisition. I'd be very curious to hear if we added up all of those, what has the city recouped in, in those sales?
We can do that, and we'll also then highlight what, I mean, the properties in yellow are the properties that are still, um, yet to be decided.
And we have a teeny, tiny, little sliver of EFG showing up on that page as well, but it's not necessarily labeled.
It was 11 by 17.
I have a long question about something Rami doesn't want to talk about. Just kidding.
Is it a 10 p.m. question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are you good? Do you have everything you need?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, we're adjourned.